The adult committee members are here and it's at six thirty. I'll call this meeting to order at six thirty. I will begin though with the statement that I've been reading for all meetings pursuant to Governor Baker's March twelfth, twenty twenty order pending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, chapter thirty eight, section eighteen, and the governor's March fifteenth, twenty twenty order, imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the North Reading School Committee is being conducted via remote participation. It's not to be mentioned. It's also being screened this time we believe on North Town and it's also being broadcast on the, uh, on the educational channel. So no one person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to make sure that the public can adequately access the meeting as provided for within this quarter. So if anybody is listening from the public and they do have questions, I'll try to remember to leave it open after different topics, but please feel free to jump in if you have questions or comments. So with that done, we'll move on to the first quarter business that is public input. If there are any members of the public that want to speak about something that is not on the agenda tonight, I'll call for five, five to six seconds to let you jump in. And if you're on mute, I think it's star six that I'm on mute. Okay, hearing none. That will move to Julia. Julia Thor said it's kind enough to join us to give us a student report. Julia, turn it over to you.
Thank you. Students have completed their first week of phase one of remote learning. The week went very well with teachers being able to set up video chats for the designated class periods and classes with all or close to all attendance, with an emphasis on no homework assessments or grading at this time, but rather a continuation of learning and a deeper exploration of standards. Both teachers and students think that it will run even smoother this week as both sides are able to work out the kinks we encountered. Many teachers chose to use the allotted hour by meeting on video chat for about ten to fifteen minutes to check in with everyone, explain the assignment for that day, and then let us go to complete it for the bulk of the class and open the video chat at the end for any questions. Students understand that advanced placement classes require additional work on your own to study for the now online exams. Students are overall very happy with the setup for remote learning, especially having the structured school back in our daily routine and the face-to-face social interaction from seeing our classmates and teachers. Starting class at ten has helped students to get close to their recommended hours of sleep as well and a comfortable hour for lunch is always nice. Social aspects of high school life have changed. The students still manage to connect with their friends using technology. A lot of kids organize their own video chats with friends or people they have not seen in a while. My lunch table has met on video call during the break between classes to eat and talk with each other. Student council also made a challenge using the TikTok app for who could get the most likes on a video, which was really fun and brought all the students back together with a laugh. My favorite student work so far was from anatomy with Ms. Julie Bear. Before we left for school, we were on our immune system unit. So to continue with this learning, she found us a virtual immunology lab from the Howard Hughes Medical Institute that simulates an interactive lab environment and lets you click on various medical equipment and walk you through the procedures, which is very realistic and a cool way to learn from home. The lab allowed us to do the antibody testing that could be used in the near future to determine who of the population has already been exposed to COVID and can return to the public as what we learned about the immune system is that once your body encounters a disease, it builds up antibodies that will fight the disease the second time you're exposed to it.
Thank you. Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments from anybody? I'll just sort of open it up.
Can you describe the winning TikTok video?
Yeah, um, it was actually a student who, um, she contacted like some of our favorite teachers and she had them send in videos of them doing a dance. So it was like a combination of teachers and students. That was fun. And it's still up on the TikTok, um, under NR StuCo if anybody wants to check it out.
Perfect. Thank you. Now, so Julie, you graduated this year. So I guess my question would be number one, you know where you're going to college and number two, well, first start, why don't we start with that?
Well, I'm actually a junior, but.
Oh, you're a junior. I said, yeah, that's good. Okay. Are you, are, so were you planning on doing, so it's junior year, I imagine when you're starting to look at colleges, are you, are you being, or are you going to try to do things for summer tours or?
Yeah, um, I actually am looking like to play soccer in college. So I kind of have, um, not only like the tours, but the ID clinic as well. And that's definitely been tough for a lot of the junior class because now, um, like a lot of our college process will be in the summer unless you are ahead on it. Um, but we're definitely using the time to like study for those standardized tests when they'll happen and do a lot of research on colleges.
Good luck with that then.
Yeah, thank you.
Other, other questions for Julia from anybody?
Julie, this is Dr. Daly. I promoted you to class of twenty twenty in our, in our agenda here.
That's okay. Thank you.
But I do want to say, you know, did, you, you mentioned that there's some of the benefits. It's funny. I was thinking about, you know, I put a lot of time in as Mr. McGowan as well in the school's part time. But I did think about that. I mean, it was, it was nice to see that the, the way the high school schedule worked out. It is, it is, um, it is kind of conducive to that research as well. Um, but how do you feel, you know, now going into, you know, we're, we're just into the second week now of this remote learning? Are you starting to feel, um, a little bit better than maybe in those first few weeks where there's sort of, you know, the new normal? Like, can you just talk about how you feel about this?
Um, yeah, I definitely like having the online classes now. Like my schedule feels a lot more normal than it was when we had like optional learning being sent out through emails. Like that was really chaotic when there was like, we weren't sure what we were supposed to do, but, um, even if teachers are just gonna like, like I said, like come on to the video chat and we can see their face and then they'll just like send out an assignment and we'll have like that hour period to like work on it and be like, okay, like I'm at school right now. It just feels a lot more like structured.
Great. Thank you.
You know, so for Julie, I hope you're getting this off. But my, so my brother, the teacher, he said to me, it was funny. He's like, you know, in some ways I think between the digital learning is preparing students more than we ever thought because more and more in the real world, it is about this, it's about being able to present on Zoom meetings. It's about knowing, you know, when to speak, when there's twenty people on there and how to speak and all that. And I don't know. I mean, I don't know if you're finding that at all, but like it, in many ways, this is as good as prep as you're going to get for real world business because more and more, you know, this is how I do most of my meetings even before, before the pandemic. So I don't know if you're thinking at all if it's made different.
No, I completely agree. Yeah.
Correct. Well, we appreciate you taking the time. You are more than welcome to stay and listen in if you want, or if you can absolutely sign off then not, and enjoy your night. So.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hope you all are doing well.
Okay. So moving on, there's no continued business, but we'll go to the new business. Um, as the new norm, I guess we'll begin with an update on COVID nineteen. Dr. Daly, I turn it over to you.
Great. Thank you very much. I think some of the, uh, things that we just discussed are sort of at the forefront ground of our conversation tonight. Um, we're in the second week of our remote learning plan. Um, I think it's going well from all reports, although as I've mentioned in some of my updates to the community that, you know, I'm also hearing from, um, from, you know, members of our committee have checked in with me, which is great, and also parents. Um, you know, my concern is that right now we're, we're, we're in what's called phase one, which is this, um, structure where we are learning this system and we're doing, um, remote learning, but we're going deeper with standards that already exist. And some of the gaps that exist right now among, uh, students that may not have device access or internet access at home or power at their home. Um, not everything we're doing is online, but, but a lot of it does require a device. And, um, it's certainly helpful to have more than one if you've got siblings. Other, other factors, students with, uh, learning disabilities and, you know, and the support, we're giving as many supports as possible, but there's definitely challenges there. Another thought is, you know, even just some parents, um, who might, you know, have, have the challenge for, for any number of reasons, including that they're trying to work from home, that they're trying to manage three kids, they're trying to, uh, you know, they're not trained as a teacher, trying to work with their students. There's lots of different challenges that are, that are home. And when we talk about the digital divide, even economically, one thing that we never really factored in is that even those that can afford additional devices and support, um, right now you can't get these items from the store. So that's something that we never really planned on when you talk about needing to do a, a roll out of devices. But we've been able to get out over, uh, two hundred and fifty devices to families in need. We've been handing out devices at the school. Um, Doug Downs, uh, Nan Cooks and myself and all the principals have been helping cut it, to organize to get people to fill out the form. And, um, I've been delivering some and handing some out to people and, uh, it's really, in some ways it's a, a pretty neat way to, uh, to meet people. Um, not, not that, uh, this week it's been interesting because it's, you know, there's folks coming up with masks and gloves and we've been following all kinds of, um, safety precautions. So we might not get to put an end to a face just yet, but it's been, um, I think people have really appreciated, um, those devices and, and being able to have those in the school. So just a question that keeps coming up. A lot of parents will ask too. Um, where are these devices coming from? So what we've done, we've taken carts that are in the schools and we've pulled them apart. And we've dismantled those carts because they were being used in classrooms. Um, obviously without the classrooms in use, we want those devices in the student's hands that need them. So we've, we've literally unwired carts, um, taken them and, and passed out those Chromebooks to people in need. And they're all signing, you know, forms and understandings that these will be, um, you know, safe for kid four and, and, you know, returned at the end of the period of closure. But it's, it's gone very well and I appreciate everyone for their help with that. So as we move into this possible phase two of learning, um, I'd love to hear more from all of you about your thoughts about this, but, you know, we're certainly getting a lot of questions from teachers, from parents. Um, and, you know, so when, uh, I was on a call this morning with our, with our association leader and he said, when you talk about going into, uh, remote learning, it's, it's similar to when you get a conversation going about homework. You know, it's about fifty percent. Fifty percent of the people think there's not enough homework being assigned. Kids should be asked to do more. And the other fifty percent say it's too much. The kids need a break. And it's very similar, I think, with the remote learning. I think we're, we're getting that sense that some feel like it's going about as well as it could and the people are feeling a lot of the pressure and they feel overwhelmed. And I think there's another group that says, come on, we're ready for more. We want to move on. We want to keep going. So as the schools and the principals, especially I think at the secondary level, and, and I'm, I'm willing to entertain if, if there's thought about even doing this differently, but I'm willing to entertain differences in moving into different phases of this, um, as secondary, high school versus middle versus elementary. Um, but there is a lot of discussion about this week continuing phase one, but maybe thinking about next week or the week after moving into phase two. We still wouldn't have, um, I, I would not recommend having homework because I think there's more than enough. I think everyone's realizing, if I can kind of sum up what people are feeling, this distance learning, um, is, is a full method of, of trying to communicate is exhausting. And so doing a half day of school certainly feels like, um, about three times as long as far as exhaustion goes and getting back to back to back assignments and, and, um, responsibilities online. So the, the work would still be maintained within the period since it is now, but we may just begin to export some new content. And, and as I said to the teachers before, you know, we're going deeper with standards that we've already taught, but we're not turning the page in the curriculum. We're not moving on to new standards. We're not getting some new concepts. Um, the suggestion would be for phase two to start to move into those, uh, new ideas. So that's the discussion I want to have with the administrative council this week, but I certainly want your input as well. And the last thing I just want to update on at this moment, um, you know, I, I think there's some other great things. The lunch program is continuing. Um, we're handing out lunches. Anna McGovern and her, her crew, um, are doing this every day. It's really fantastic what they're doing. Um, and I just want to mention that the middle school, um, DC trip is going to be canceled and the company is canceling that as well. And Mr. Lawrie, Ms. O'Connell, Dr. O'Connell have prepared some, um, letters and information to go home to parents. So I wanted to share that with everyone tonight. And I'm certainly open for any other updates or questions. Michael, I don't know if you have anything to add before we open up the questions?
Um, thank you, Dr. Daly. No, I think that was great. Um, you know, we continue, the business office operation continues to, to, uh, you know, do, do a really good job working hard to, to manage the situation remotely. And, you know, payroll and, and payments continue to happen. Um, bill warrants and, and payroll warrants. Appreciate the committee being so, um, efficient with, with signing, signing those with the DocuSign program. So continue to check in regularly with the business office staff and, and move that operation along. Um, and as Dr. Daly alluded to earlier, uh, we're certainly continuing to, um, offer grabbing gold nails to really all families that at this point, you know, they're, they're in need of that. And Anna McGovern and food service staff, I certainly appreciate all of their efforts on, and the assistance with the custodial staff, um, with the setup and, and, and clean up each and, you know, every day that they're, they're, they're operating the program. So it, it's a lot of good, good work on that front happening and we'll be sending out a reminder this week that that program is available just to make sure all of the community and the North County Public School community is aware that that is there if they, if they need it. It's an ongoing enrollment and registration process. We just need to go some information from you and you can start receiving that service. So, um, so that, that's kind of it on the business side. Thank you.
Thank, thank you both. So kind of open up the questions. I'll kind of just go around the, uh, the community to begin. So Chris, do you have any comments or questions?
Uh, sure. Dr. Daly, I appreciate the, uh, the update and I really appreciate what you said. I thought it was important to kind of underline that, that, um, while you've come up with a, you've come up with a great blueprint for how to phase things out, it doesn't mean that we, for the sake of consistency, have to have the high school at the same spot as the middle school and maybe flexibility might be a, a good option to have there. Um, I was thinking if, as long as there are strict guidelines about homework and about how intense may the task in terms of difficulty and time, uh, what are the reasons for not letting teachers, either by department or by individual dictate when, when it is appropriate to move into a concept? Why, uh, why have it be set to a school or a district?
So I would want to, at least at the entire level, like high school altogether, I would want them to all agree to, that it's the right time to move forward. My concerns would be once you start moving forward, any gaps that exist right now, um, whether it be, like I said before, technology, socioeconomic or learning, um, learning supports that are needed. When you introduce new concepts and new content, everything, there's those gaps widen. And so that's just a concern. We need to be able to make sure that we're scaling up and, and the supports are working. So, you know, week one was really just getting a feel for it and getting a handle for it. Um, I sent out a couple of updates on this to my teachers and a lot of my, um, special education teachers wrote back and said, thank you for, for recognizing this because I've been talking to parents who are, who are very frustrated and they're trying so hard to work with their students and it's just, you know, there's just so many additional challenges in some homes. Um, and we just want to be vicodin because if we do move on, then we're not leaving folks behind. And so, you know, I trust my principals that they're going to get a great feel for this from their teachers, from their parents, from their students about whether they're ready to try something new, um, and what that looks like. And I think, I think everything we do, we just move ahead slowly. I think one of the big messages too is that, you know, we're not trying to replicate school and we're not necessarily going to get to that same exact place that we get to every single year. And if we're trying to do that, it's, it's going to be a disservice to the students. Um, we need to continue some learning. We need to challenge them, have some new ideas and some new exploration. But we have that flexibility. We need to be, and, and I think the, the main questions that we received in, in week one were all about flexibility. Um, you know, whenever someone thought it sounded too rigid, we needed to come back in and say, no, we can make that work for you and your schedule. I mean, uh, just an example, it's, you know, if you've got two parents that are, that are, um, on the front line as, as essential employees and they say, you know what, when I get home at six o'clock, I want to work with my students then and, and not during the day. Um, then, then I think that's fine. That needs to be something that works for that family and I think we need to be flexible that way. So I think that's really it, Chris. We just want to make sure that when we do move ahead, that we've done everything in place with our student support system, uh, to make sure that everyone's supported, um, and to move on. And, you know, it really was the recommendation from the state was to do the deep learning piece and, you know, a lot of districts have agreed that, that that's as far as they would go. But there's other districts and we're among them that have said from the get-go that if this goes on longer than, you know, a few weeks, we want to make sure that we, we continue to do what's best for our students and our, and our community. Um, and make sure that, that we can, uh, continue work together.
Okay. Thank you. I think that, uh, uh, fair answer.
Thank you, Chris. Rich, any comments or questions?
Yes, thanks. Um, Dr. Daly, do you have any sense of, um, you, you, it sounds like you guys have done a great job of getting devices into people's hands and whatnot. Uh, is, is there, are you aware of students, especially at the high school, middle school level, but really any students who may have, who, who aren't, who aren't really reachable or who, or who are, are still struggling, um, in ways that they might not be, uh, to, uh, under normal circumstances to, to access this, uh, this learning? Um, is there a significant number or are you aware of a number or, or what's your sense of all that?
Yeah, my, thanks. It's a good question, Rich. I think my, my sense is that we've done a very good job of reaching a lot of people. From the number of surveys that I received back, I think we hit just about, everybody has filled out that survey. There's, uh, we did a two-pronged approach. So the teachers and principals also reached out to families. And the teachers and principals are also aware of folks that there may be a language barrier. There may be a, a device connectivity issue, um, where they're not able to, to complete the survey to get the information in. And so teachers and principals have assisted in helping families to complete those, uh, surveys to get the information in. I know that we've, um, worked with some families that weren't able to, um, complete the survey, um, for, for any number of reasons. And we've been able to do that with them, fill it in over the phone. Um, in some cases they haven't been able to pick the devices up, so we hand deliver it to their homes. Um, and, and I do think, you know, I, I think we've got some great, um, teachers that are very, you know, tuned in to the needs of their students. And I, I'm very confident that we have hit just about everybody that needs that. We had, um, you know, we had a good number the first couple of weeks. I think once we started, once we announced the remote learning plan, we had a huge surge. So last week, um, you know, we, we doubled the amount that we had out there over a couple of days in order to, um, all different, um, students that were applying. And some students, you know, some of the parents said, you know, that they, you know, they, they feel like they can afford a device, but they couldn't get to a store to get one. Is it okay if they borrow one? Lots of parents said that, you know, they, they want to make sure that these are going to those families in need and they don't want to take them away. But we were able to support all those families as well because I think many of us have been in this situation now. You know, we have maybe, maybe, uh, the parents have a computer and the kids have a computer and they've got three kids. And mom and dad are both kind of teacher, work from home and all three kids are on the computer. So, uh, having a few extra devices now to share. I think people also realize too, uh, when they started to do some of the remote learning that their, you know, the, the specifications of their device may not have been the latest version or, or up to speed and they weren't able to keep up with the assignment. So, um, getting a device from the school is pretty, is pretty good. You know, out of the survey, we had over ninety-nine percent, um, that, that were able to have connectivity at home. And those that said they didn't have it, we've reached out to them and, and included follow-ups, um, at the school level to remind folks that there are free options from many of the, the internet providers. And that it, it's, you know, there's, there are many ways to get connectivity at this point. And so we've been working to close many of those gaps in our district as well. So I, I feel pretty confident that we hit, that we hit just about everybody. I think if we didn't, we'd be hearing directly from teachers about students who are, who are not completing the assignment. And just to be clear too, because I followed up with a few parents about this as well. You know, these assignments, although it's flexible, we, we consider the remote learning plan to not be optional. It's not something you could opt in or opt out of. This is the curriculum and it's the same, you know, it's, it's required that the students attend school. And so this is, this is what school is right now. I think within that, there's a lot of room for flexibility and the teachers are aware of that and the principals are aware of that. But in the few cases where someone said, you know, I just want to do my own plan, I've, I've spoken to those folks and talked about, you know, if you wanted to fully do that, that would be more of a homeschooling option, but, um, but I've, you know, I've kind of counted it and the folks have agreed to say, you know, let's just work within the current, uh, framework and, and make sure that, um, that it's flexible. Because, you know, I can ensure that the plan, I've seen those plans. I know the teachers are carrying out those plans, but I know that those are appropriate grade level expectations for the students. So that's really the way that works. But as I mentioned and I'll say over and over, you know, within those plans, there needs room for flexibility. I'm, I'm starting with my own children at home and, and, uh, and, and our school's been great. I think my children's been great as well.
Thanks. And, um, uh, regarding the, the thoughts about sort of moving on to new curriculum, would, would your thoughts on that change or, uh, that question become a little more intensive if school closures were extended through the end of the year? Um, I'm sorry, can you just repeat that question?
Sure. So you were, we were talking earlier about, about, uh, your thoughts on, um, moving on to new, to new, uh, topics or new, uh, uh, subjects within a class. Whereas right now you're just, uh, sticking with, you know, where they were at, at the time of the closure. So my question is, would that, would, and, and you indicated that, that there's some discussion about, about moving on to new topics. And I'm, I'm wondering if the school closures were extended through the end of June, which is certainly a possibility, would that intensify that sort of discussion of, you know, where, where do we need to end up at the end of June? I think it would, uh, Rich. I think, you know, that's part of what we're thinking about is if this goes longer than they want. Um, we want to get as many students as possible, um, to the best place as possible. And so I think, I think that's our, our goal. Not trying to, again, not trying to get exactly to where you would if you, if you're in school for the full amount of time and, and delivering everything face-to-face, but I think we have a better chance of getting more students where they need to be. Um, you know, if, if we, if we were able to have some ability to move, to move forward. And I think, again, to do it slowly, not to necessarily, you know, slam our foot on the gas here and, and change it all up. I think everyone knows that you can just start to slowly introduce some new ideas. But again, there's a lot of discussion that needs to happen here. And I think, um, I think certainly, um, that's how we're approaching it. I think, you know, some districts may be taking this and then really just you know, just going deeper and deeper and deeper with existing standards. I think that, um, I think that we're going to continue to do that, but I think we will, you know, I, I'm sensing that the teachers and administrators feel that we could introduce some new concepts and some new ideas and, uh, you know, and, and do this well for our students.
And my last quick question is for, uh, Mr. Connolly, uh, just regarding the, the lunches or the meals. Um, I, I can't remember if we talked about it, uh, last week at the workshop or the, or our previous, uh, regular meeting, but, uh, since then, has, has there been an increase in the number of meals, uh, given out or has it been pretty steady?
So we did re-advertise and there has been a slight increase of about ten to fifteen additional meals, um, per day, both breakfast and lunch. Um, so, uh, we've gone from about thirty-five to about forty-five on average, um, each day right now. So there has been an increase. Um, the DESE, I'm happy to do, and also announce has approved, uh, officially approved, um, the waiver allowing all districts to claim those mail. Um, and they're going to reimburse the districts at the paid reimbursement rate, um, you know, regardless of, um, someone's eligibility or, or status. So that from a financial perspective, that, that certainly helps. Um, so there'll be some additional, you know, federal reimbursement revenue by, um, North Reading being a, being a site. So we are officially going through that process, um, to officially apply and, and get, um, and get approved for that. So we are, we are close to completing that process with the DESE so we can claim the, the March mails and then continue to do that for April. Um, so that, that's certainly a good thing, um, at the state level that's happening. But we'll continue to make families aware with some reminders, um, that that's available and, um, we'll continue to, to serve, serve the needs of the program.
Do you need any questions or comments?
Hi. Um, I had a couple of questions. Um, I think Julie had mentioned something about the AP exams. Um, are they learning it on their own? Are they getting sites and are the exams going to happen? The AP test?
Yes, the AP test, they're, they're on a slightly different, uh, format and schedule. They've kind of given some real guidelines about what's going to be covered, what's not going to be covered. Um, and there's some different options about how they're going to do that. The College Board has put a lot of, um, funding and energy and. College Board has put a lot of, um, funding and energy into making this work for the students for this year. Um, those classes are a little bit different, and I mentioned this before. We did, because those students already, when they sign up for those courses, there's a little bit more on them to do some independent learning outside of what the teachers are providing. And so those students have, have been preparing and working for those, um, all along. You know, ever since we went out on March thirteenth, they've been able to, um, continue to do that learning on their own. But this, you know, moving into a different phase, that would change a little bit of what the teachers are teaching and covering in the classes too. So, um, again, Ms. LaPret's been there right with us from the, from the get-go and, you know, we feel that our students are going to be well prepared for, to all those teachers.
All right, good. Um, and then the other question is, uh, kind of like, you know, you can't foresee the future, but if, um, the school is continuing to be virtual until the end of June, um, how does that affect, and this is, personal, um, development days?
Uh...
I'm sorry, professional development days, not personal?
Professional development days?
Yes, just that and curiosity.
I believe there's only one other day that's scheduled, um, and it's a half day, and that just would not be a professional development day. I believe it's May, uh, twenty-second?
Yeah.
Um, and that, that is the only remaining, oh, actually, on, on, uh, June, that's also the half day. So those days would not be, um, those days would not be professional development days. Our, our remote learning plan includes professional development, um, for teachers, and so it's already sort of built into our plan. And so those days that are in the schedule would just be full days of remote learning. They would not be, um, professional development days.
Okay.
And it doesn't, that, that wouldn't impact our calendar because we're only half day.
Right, yeah. That I was looking at the calendar, that's why I was just kind of like wondering, so. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Diana, any questions or comments?
Um, yes, I actually just had a couple of questions for you. Um, if we move forward with the Phase Two of the plan, um, and I'm assuming that, that is the majority translated to new content, I'm assuming that across all levels, elementary, middle and high school, that there would be an element of, um, teaching on the, obviously the teacher's half of things, not so much, you know, it's all been independent learning, um, in my experience, to date a lot of just assignments and, and sort of, it feels very much so like virtual homework. Um, and I can only speak to the elementary level, but I was curious, are there going to be true lessons or is that going to be the expectation of the parents?
Good question, yeah. I, I would say that, I don't know that your experience is, um, is the experience everyone's having. I think that a lot of teachers are doing some virtual re-teaching or lessons or check-ins with students. Um, what they're not doing right now is they're not introducing, "Here's some new content, here's, here's a new standard." Um, so I definitely, there definitely would be that piece of it as well, more than just an assignment. I think there will be, um, some, some teaching. The, the thing that, um, that it might not be, that a lot of folks might think it, it, it could be, is, you know, sitting down at a specific time, logging in to a live lesson. It's, it's not, it may, may not necessarily be that and that, that, a lot of that is not even recommended just because of, uh, technology connectivity issues. But what you might see are, uh, you know, a new lesson introduced by a teacher type video that then the students are clicking on and watching. So I, I think a lot of that is happening now, but it's not really teaching them, introducing something new. Um, so when you say that, that, you know, your experience has been a lot of, um, assignments that then parents are expected to deal with the students, um, I, I hope for the most part that, that that won't feel that way and, and that's good feedback that I'll bring back to folks because it's, you know, the parent's role is really to support to the best of their ability and to reinforce. And I know, um, at the elementary level especially, I think it does, it does feel a lot more like there's, there's more explicit teaching because the students need more support, right? Just in general, um, than they would at the other levels. And so, you know, I, I'm anticipating that we may be a little bit slower to move into, roll into, into new content at the elementary level. I'm not entirely sure what our discussions are going to lead to. But I definitely think that your point about making sure that, um, anything you just introduce has all the support from teaching and, 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 um, guided support for students. It can't just be, "Here's something brand new that the students have never seen before and now the parents need to, to relay them." That, that, that will not be effective, so that would not be what we recommend, for sure.
Thank you. No, I, um, actually as a parent that is on that, you know, the two different camps that you are communicating, you know, struggling with just, you know, lack of independence at that level and special needs and two working parents, um, I'm actually an advocate of new content because I feel like all the work that you're putting into it and the struggles that you do have trying to comply is worth it, um, versus just, you know, doing work that's already been taught. So I'm actually a big advocate of, of moving forward with that. Um, one thing that, my last question was just around grading. I know in your last email you mentioned that, you know, there's really no test for that type of grading, um, happening. If we roll out, you know, the new content, um, is that when grading might apply? And, and please correct me if I'm wrong with the grading piece. Uh, one of the concerns I have is that if there's limitations of parents that are supporting children, is their grades going to be impacted when it's not really a, a reflection of them but more so a reflection of their home environment and the restrictions on, um, their support around them?
Sure. Good, good question also. So our, our plans, before we would roll anything out, would be to clarify all of this, but we would, we would not be, um, recommending that there's any kind of grading or, um, anything that would really impact anything like a GPA or, or things of that nature at the, at the upper levels as well. We, we would continue to provide standards-based feedback as we are doing now, um, at the elementary level. We would continue to provide assessments and feedback on skills and, um, at, at the secondary level, but it would not be necessarily translated into a number or a grade. And those grades and numbers would not impact, uh, the grades. For the high school, I've been looking at their plan today. Um, by the way, I should mention too that the elementarys have finished their conferences. The high schools are playing in place to, to, to have their conferences as well. We would come out with some clear language around third quarter ending. Third quarter's a little bit different because we had, um, the majority of the third quarter was already completed and now we've had some time for students to do some makeup assignments. Um, and so that's happened. And third quarter will be, um, clearly defined and delineated. And then what fourth quarter and end-of-year grades and, and all that makeup look like should also be communicated as well. I know the high school's looking to use some of the rubrics that have existed for quite some time at the high school about student expectations. So we still need to have that level of accountability, um, and, and certainly the incentive for students to do work. Um, and, and, you know, without a grade, you don't want there to be a disincentive to, to, to be fully committed to the work. But at the same time, we're not going to introduce all the, the issues that, that's around grading and GPA and all that as well. So we would move forward with the content, we'd move forward with new learning, um, but we would not be, uh, pushing for grades or anything that's going to, you know, in that sense, look just like school. Now, if we go back to school and we're face-to-face, you know, we have to consider that as well, what that would look like, you know, how, how much of it would return to normal. But, but right now, we're in this phase and we're trying to think about course, uh, you know, what fourth quarter would look like and end-of-year would look like. And that's the plan that we took forward.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so I think Julie dropped it off. Any, any members of the public have any questions? I have a few afterwards, but want to open up if anybody from the public. I also think Norkin was having trouble getting on, so I might email the link in a second. But, um, I, I have a few questions to, to start. So number one, uh, Dr. Daly, can you mention, can you talk a little bit about MCAS? And, you know, I, I believe it just MCAS is waived for the rest of this year, is that, is that correct?
So, yes, the commissioner has, has moved, has, has waived MCAS grades three through, um, ten for the year. And, um, they are just waiting to get some more information about the, the competency determination, which is the requirement for students to pass that assessment in order to graduate. So they're, they're just waiting for a little bit more of that. But they have, um, they have not, they have canceled all of the, uh, testing for all grade levels, including high school five for, um, spring of twenty twenty-four.
Okay, and, and, and later, I mean, I think we have to talk about graduation and all that. But for, for right now, one suggestion, um, and this kind of theme I sent Diane a little bit. Um, I think, I think my wife and I are trying to help at home. My wife's doing ninety-five percent of it, so I'm not going to act like we're doing this equally. Um, but, but I know if, if there is new content, one thing that I would hope is that there'd be some sort of support for parents as well. I know that at the elementary, a lot of things with math in particular, a lot of teachers will send home like, "This is what we're doing, you know, um, this is how you do math." And so I, I think that would be particularly helpful, especially at the elementary level, that if there, especially with math assignments in particular, if there could be some parent guides that are sent home as well. Not saying that parents have to be teaching it, but just thinking about that. And even potentially office hours for parents at beginning of unit, where, you know, there could be videos geared to parents to help support the kids. Just a suggestion from me.
Yep, that's great. I'll pass that on as well.
And, uh, um, so you were mentioning, like, if we move, move forward with, with Phase Two, would the structure be the exact same or would it, would the structure be, you know, different than? I mean, I think from what I've seen, I think the structure's been pretty good. I know that it can vary grade to grade, teacher to teacher. But overall, I feel like the structure and, you know, here's thirty minutes, you know, here's three hours, here's thirty minutes of block, I think that's been delivered pretty well so far from what I've seen. So would the structure remain the same? It would just be the content would be different?
I would say that, that that would be the only real change. The structure would remain the same and it would be just the idea of some new, some new concepts and content. And in some ways, I mean, teachers have, may have introduced a new book and they're still going to the same standard. So this, and e- everything we do every day is new, even if we're revisiting something old. So there's certainly, um, there's certainly been new experiences and new ideas. This is really about moving forward with the curriculum and that would be the biggest change that we might see.
Yeah, I mean, and, and my, my fear is a core of equity issues, especially with students with, with student services that, you know, with people to help them. But with that being said, I, I agree, I don't think we can just review content for the remainder of the year if we're going to be in school or, you know, doing any sort of assignments from home. And so, yeah, so I, so I do agree that I think, you know, soon we need to move on to new content, but... So that's, that's all my comments and questions. Does anybody else have any follow-up questions? If not, oh, oh, actually, one follow-up thing for, uh, for Michael. I will probably advertise as well, so maybe I'll connect with you, Michael, offline about, about the meals because I do want to make sure that the community understands that even if you do not qualify for your reduced lunches, if it would be helpful, you can absolutely, you know, reach out for a, a lunch because if anything, it's not a burden on the, um, on the school. It would actually be beneficial to the school since we are getting reimbursed fully from DESE for those meals. And so if, you know, you do have students at home and you, you know, would like a free meal, I mean, it, it's actually better for the school district because people will be, you know, coming in to make them anyways and whether you're making forty-five meals or a hundred and forty-five, really is that much, if the cost is that much different, we get more reimbursement from DESE for that.
So Mr. Buckley, just to that point, there's been an email that's calling at nine AM that, um, tomorrow morning, that is a reminder to, um, all families that number one, all families are eligible and, um, just again, how the, how the program works, what time the pickups are and, um, how to just, you know, quickly register for that. But, yeah, anything you can do to promote and, and advertise is, is certainly would be helpful.
Great, thank you very much. Okay, there's no vote needed on this?
I, I just think to make it clear to Michael, folks, it's not all a part, right? If folks are signing up, they're basically signing up for the program. Right? We're not saying like, "I just want lunch this Tuesday. I want lunches as a part of the program." Is that correct?
That's correct. So they're, they're kind of signing up indicating that they, you know, either, either want a, a cold breakfast and a, or a cold lunch, um, but they're, they are kind of signing up, you know, as, as part of the program. And, um, we would then, um, provide, provide those meals on Monday, Wednesday and Friday for, um, you know, the next couple of days each time. That's, that's how it's, that's how it's functioning right now. So yes, thank you.
Okay, so moving on, we have the school calendar updates and we need to discuss that vote on it, Dr. Daly.
So, thank you, uh, Mr. Buckley. As, as was discussed a little bit at our last meeting and I believe it's Mr. McGowan's suggestion, um, it's really gained some traction about, you know, breaking up the, the vacation a little bit. I think, um, we've certainly seen many, many more districts now go to where we were thinking, uh, North Reading was going to go, which is to not take the full week of April vacation next week and, and to power through. Um, and many districts are doing something similar to, you know, taking a day or a couple of days next week and then using those days at the end of the year to get out early. Um, my recommendation is to be, observe the Monday holiday, Patriots Day, which is, um, a, a holiday for everyone. Um, and then to also take the Friday of next week as a vacation day. I think it, it is an, uh, exhausting experience, as I mentioned earlier, and I think they have a couple of days, um, so basically, you know, two extended weekends, um, is a little bit of a, of a vacation. And then you have the three days in the middle, um, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday as, uh, full remote learning days. The reason why I would recommend doing the three days and not two and not four is just the way our schedule is designed. As I mentioned, we have some built-in professional development and learning scheduled on Wednesdays. And at the secondary level, we're certainly doing green days and gold days or days, even days and odd days. And so by having three days, it actually works out really well. You've got one green day, one gold day, and then also our, um, our remote professional development day, um, this, where teachers are collaborating, building all the lessons for the future. So that actually works pretty well. The other part that I would recommend is that we don't necessarily, uh, say right now that we're going to get out earlier, but we may also, um, we, we get commit to the days at the moment because we don't know what beyond May fourth looks like. But in the, in the chance that we do, uh, remain out beyond May fourth, we may very well need additional vacation days or additional breaks. For example, maybe that week of Memorial Day, which is May twenty-fifth, we may also say, "Let's take the twenty-fifth and the twenty-ninth and do another three-day week there." And that fills in another break, um, basically another three or four weeks after, um, the break we had. So my recommendation is that this time we would say for the April vacation calendar to be changed and to say that we would take the twentieth and the twenty-fourth and the other three days would be, um, released. And at the moment, it would be used towards getting out earlier. Right now, our last day would be the twenty-fourth, so we would get out a few days earlier. But I just wanted to add the note that we might want to reuse those days for another break, um, that we could revisit at a future meeting if the school closure is extended.
Thank you. Comments from the committee? Chris, we'll go in team order again. Chris?
Sure. Uh, Dr. Daly, it was brought up by, uh, I want to say Mr. Buckley, but by other committee members, but I thought it was a very good point, um, previous to this conversation now, which was that in the event that schools do reopen, our days of, and our school calendars that are left of in-person learning are going to be more valuable than, than the days that we have right now. I'm also trying to point out. So is this suggestion of yours being made with a kind of skepticism that we're going to be going back by the end of the year?
Um, not necessarily. I mean, I, I'm really not sure. I think it, uh, my honest opinion is it needs to extend beyond May fourth. I mean, just even the concept of coming back right now, the things we need to do to prepare the school, I think we might need, uh, some more time. And I, I do anticipate that there will be something longer. I don't know, right now, there's really no indicators that that would move beyond there. Um, you know, I think, I think we still have flexibility about those days. And, you know, if we're in school these days, I don't know that that necessarily means that, um, we wouldn't be able to be in school, um, some of those days in June. Like I said, we could use some of those vacation days if we decided that that's what we wanted to do. So I think, I think it provides us a lot of flexibility to figure out, you know, how we can get students to where we need them to be by the end of this year, um, or at least, at least to the best place possible by the end of the year. So I think there's some flexibility built in, but, but I, I wouldn't read too much into this decision. I think this decision is based upon... I think this decision is based upon, um, the fact that we just got our remote running plan up and running. And, and as we're talking about here, um, getting ready for some new cards that are moving into phase two. And to just take the completely, uh, the entire week off, we feel like we'd lose a lot of momentum. We've seen, seeing that we've been at school since March thirteenth, we didn't want to do that too quickly. So.
Okay, thank you.
And, and Chris, I also think that theoretically, if, if this is gonna be extended, I think they'll extend it, you know, hopefully at least a week before the date ends. So like, if we thought we were actually going back on May fourth, we could then at the last minute decide to take a couple of extra vacation days earlier. There's a lot of flexibility, I think, in when we did it, but.
Sure. Yeah, and ultimately, you know, those, those decisions are, are, are really gonna be out of our hands. It's gonna be on the state level at least. But, um, yeah. Okay, thank you.
Um, Rich, any comments or questions or thoughts?
Uh, no, I, I generally think it's a, a pretty good compromise between, you know, the two extreme positions, so.
Do you like your idea?
I like my idea, yeah. Actually, I took a, I took a poll at, uh, with my work colleagues, and, uh, uh, I think five or six people who answered, five said that, uh, they, the entire April vacation was canceled. And, and, uh, one said that they were gonna do some kind of, uh, similar to what we're deciding, just for, uh, reference.
Diane, have no questions? Janine, any comments or questions?
Did you hear me?
No, we did not. Go ahead. Repeat?
Um, no, I'm okay. Thank you.
Thank you. So I, and, and from my thoughts, I like the approach. Uh, I think that's exactly what I would recommend. I think you take it right now, and I don't think we commit to whether or not we just get out three days early, two days early. I think part of this is we've only done this for a week and a half, and so I think it's very hard to know how this is going to go. And it might be that there's a lot of frustration, and we feel that building up. And so it might be nice to have a couple of three or four-day weeks ahead, or it could be that people just kind of wanna get out early. And so personally, I think with, with a week and a half of data underneath our belt, it's really hard to decide how, uh, how this is gonna go. And so I, I like the idea of keeping the flexibility. So I would say that, you know, I would knock this happening in April break and just say, you know, we haven't yet determined those other three days of what's gonna happen to them.
It all depends on how nice the weather is in June.
Um, and well, if we can even get outside in June. So, well, uh, so, so for purposes today, I think we just need a motion to revise the, the calendar just to say that, you know, add back, to revise and say that we are not gonna be implementing an April break on April twenty-first, twenty-second, and twenty-third, and those will be, you know, well, whatever they're called right now, digital learning days, I guess. A kind of motion for that, if that sounds okay to you, Dr. Daley?
Yes, I'd say, yeah, remote learning days, yeah. So I, so I, I can do that, Scott. I move that, given the school closures due to COVID-nineteen, we amend the calendar for twenty nineteen, twenty, twenty twenty to, uh, change, uh, April twenty, what is it, twenty-first, twenty-second, and twenty-third to, uh, remote learning days, uh, and take the Patriots' Day holiday and a, uh, a, a school vacation day on April twenty-fourth.
My second? Okay, so vote, roll call vote. Rich?
Hi.
Chris?
Hi.
Diana?
Hi.
Janine?
Hi.
I'm a hi as well. Vote change. Three to zero. Thank you, everyone.
Two seconds, that's motion.
What was that? Chris, Chris?
Yeah, Chris, I'll do that.
Chris, pop up.
Okay.
Thanks, Mr. Buckley.
You're, you're welcome. Um, okay, moving on. So we now have the public hearing. So I don't think I need a motion. I think I just have to say that I'm opening the public hearing for fiscal year twenty twenty-one budget at seven twenty-four PM. And with that said, I turn this over to Mr. Assistant Superintendent Connolly.
Thank you, Chairman Buckley. Um, so we do have a brief PowerPoint to kind of frame the conversation today. Um, and we're gonna try to move through it relatively quickly. I, I know we presented the budget a, a couple of different times i- in public at this point. So, um, but again, I'm gonna, essentially, the, the topics I'm gonna review today, um, are essentially the, touch upon the FY twenty-one budget drivers, um, which, um, we've talked about. But I'll kind of, I'll highlight what, what the main, the main drivers are in the FY twenty-one budget. Um, I'll talk about the recommended, uh, new position, their original budget proposal, and that, uh, uh, I'll touch upon the, the new positions that we had, um, advocated for in our, our recommended budget to the school committee. I'll talk a little bit about the numbers and go over the, the operating budget summary. Um, and then I will talk about the current budget gap and how we go about balancing that, that proposal. Um, and then at the end, talk about some budget conclusions, potential budget risks, and what, what our next steps, our next steps are. So Patrick, if you wanna scroll, scroll down, move, move the presentation down to, uh, budget driver slide. Perfect. So, um, as you know, we had five major budget drivers, uh, the first being our contractual salary obligations. So certainly with a school department budget, um, the, you know, over eighty-three percent of our budget is, uh, personnel services and salary obligations. Um, so it's not unusual that that's gonna be probably the largest budget driver. So, uh, as we look towards meeting our contractual obligations with our, our, our staff and our bargaining unit, as well as looking to move the district forward with, um, new positions and adjusting some staffing for changes in enrollment. Um, you know, our, our contractual, you know, salary obligations are certainly a, a big part of the, the budget this year. Um, enrollment needs, uh, there, even though enrollment is relatively staying, staying stable, there are some increases at the elementary level. The middle school level is staying about the same, and the high school level is going down. So district-wide enrollment, we're about, um, we were, we're down slightly. Um, but the, the elementary enrollment, particularly in the, in the primary grade, is on a rise, mainly due to a very large full-day kindergarten class moving up to grade one. So we have included some additional staffing in our recommended budget to address, um, enrollment at the elementary level to maintain the, the optimum class sizes, um, that, that we look to maintain. That's always a big budget priority. Um, year five, NRPS twenty twenty-one, these are, these really guide our new positions, our new initiatives, it's our strategic plan. So in a moment, I'm gonna highlight, um, some of those new positions that were included in the administrative recommended, um, budget, um, which we've talked about in the past as well. So I'm gonna talk about some, some of those, those new positions guided by our strategic plan. And then operationally, it's always a, a major budget driver. We certainly have cost increases, um, to adjust to certainly our, our obligations for building maintenance areas for HVAC contracts, plumbing, boiler repair contracts, wastewater treatment plant operations, um, both our regular and special education bussing program, uh, utility rates, electricity, gas, water, all these rates kind of go up annually and we need to adjust the budget accordingly. So, so that's certainly, uh, um, always a driver of the budget. Then our special education costs, so certainly fun to support both our in-district special education programs. Um, you know, certainly need to be adjusted from an ongoing basis adequately to meet, um, the needs of students, um, as well as our, our out-of-district costs for educating students where, when appropriate, um, outside the district for, for private day and collaborative tuitions and transportation costs. So our budget proposal, just note, did include a reduction in our out-of-district costs, mainly because we are looking at having less students, um, due to some students aging out of, of certain programs. Some students we anticipate going back in district, um, educating outside the district. So there actually is a reduction in the out-of-district tuition and transportation lines. Um, but at the same time, there's certainly need in district to move our in-district programs forward. We certainly allocated resources to provide additional student support services, in particular in the areas of increased social and emotional support. Um, and all these programs, in-district programs, all to work to meet the needs of our students adequately, as well as reduce the need for outside placement, um, in special education services. So these are the five major budget drivers. Patrick, come on to the next slide. Um, as a highlight, um, the five major categories, I think you can kind of see that the budget drivers at play somewhat. So certainly salaries, as I mentioned, biggest driving factor there, eighty-three point six percent. We have our out-of-district tuition cost, which is, um, a small piece of the, um, at five point three percent. It's actually down about a percent from, from last year due to the anticipated savings in the out-of-district tuition by having about five less students being educated outside the district. Transportation has stayed about, um, you know, around one point one or one point two percent of this allocation. Our operations and maintenance is slightly up from last year. I think we're in the about five point five percent, around to six point one, um, of our budget allocation, and that's just mainly to address needs around increased utility costs, increased wastewater treatment, contracts, HVAC, heating, cooling, plumbing, those needs certainly are, are, you know, go up each year that we have to adjust to, um, as well. And then our instructional expense budget, um, is somewhat up. It's been relatively consistent around this, uh, percentage, uh, point. But we're certainly trying to reallocate resources to make sure the, the school discretionary expense budget for instructional materials, textbooks, instructional technology adequately funded.
These calls now.
Uh, as well as a, a, a need to, to fund technology as well as, as a, a big driving factor there. Um, but overall, these, these don't change significantly from year to year, these, these scenario, uh, breakdowns. So Patrick, if you wanna go to the next slide, I'll, and I'll talk about some of the new staffing positions that were recommended in our, our proposal to the school committee. So we basically have been looking at six and a half new positions, all driven by both, um, really to meet our budget goals that we set at the beginning of the year. So we had, um, the need to make adjustments due to some increased enrollment at the elementary level. I spoke of that earlier. Um, there's certainly a high kindergarten class moving up to grade one. So there's a need to add some sections at grade one to meet the demand of, of kindergarten, um, the, the higher kindergarten class coming, coming in. Um, there's a slightly reduced, uh, kindergarten class next year, so there might be a little bit of savings there with teachers moving up to, to grade one. Uh, but overall, we're looking at, at about one point five of, of new FTEs to adequately meet, um, and maintain the, the appropriate class sizes we're looking to maintain. Uh, these, this next, these next three are really driven by our strategic plan and NRPS twenty twenty-one initiatives, which focuses on the teaching and learning strategy. Um, you may recall, we started a, a initiative last year to add some academic teaching in the areas of foreign language and, and STEM, science, technology, engineering, mathematics, curricular area, that's middle school. That was really a two-year, uh, plan to meet some initiatives in expanding foreign language and expanding offerings in the, in the STEM curricular areas, as well as helping the middle school kind of re, restructure and redesign their schedule and develop some staffing efficiencies with a, with a schedule that's more consistent amongst the three grades, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. Um, so we really see that as a level services need, um, to continue that, the effort that we're beginning, that had begun last year. It's also a part of our strategic plan. Um, these next two positions were positions that we have, uh, presented and recommended previously. Their, their priorities in our strategic plan, there are many, any other positions that are, are a part of our, that strategic plan. These were two that were among the highest of priorities by the administrative team. The elementary teaching and learning coordinator and the reading specialist, both initiatives at the elementary level that we have recommended before, but have, have unfortunately, as the budget moves through the deliberation process, we've fallen short in the funding area. Um, the teaching and learning coordinator, and it would be an administrative position that would assist the three elementary school principals in providing support in the areas of curriculum, instruction, assessment, and administration, as well as additional support around supervision and evaluation. Um, the reading teacher at the elementary level would help these schools more fully implement response to intervention strategies. It would certainly allow each school to provide the supports necessary to students across all grade levels. The final position there was an operational need that we, uh, came very close to funding last year. We didn't quite, quite make, make the list as we moved through the budget process. Uh, we do still see a need in additional floor custodian. It would be overtime savings. So we, we, we're asking for a funding of about half that, half that salary of that position with the additional amount coming from a reduced, uh, overtime cost. And it would allow us to meet, stay within the appropriate cleaning to, to, um, square footage area, uh, industry standard ratios. It would allow us not to fall behind when we may not be in full complement of, of staff. Um, we'd be able to, to stay on top, on top of the task in the square footage area, really across all, all four campuses. So all, all in all, we were looking at six point five FTE positions. This was a little over four hundred and eighty-three thousand. And the, the strategic plan positions, when you include the middle school academic teaching position in that number, were a little over three hundred and thirteen thousand, which essentially represents about point nine percent of an increase of our total four point five percent recommended budget increase to, to the school committee. Um, so Patrick, if you go to the next slide, if we look at the numbers, I just wanna, summary where our ask for the general fund, which is the amount we would ask the community to support at our annual town meeting, the local appropriation was thirty-three million, one ninety-nine, five thirty. That's a little more than one point four million dollars higher than FY twenty. It was a four point five percent increase over fiscal year twenty. Um, that doesn't quite tell the full picture, because as you know, we have a variety of budget subsidies in the areas of our federal and state grants, our revolving accounts, to which we assess a user fee or a tuition cost to some of our optional programs, like full-day kindergarten, preschool, um, athletics, extracurricular, bussing, performing arts, et cetera. Uh, they all work to help bring in an additional three point two million dollars of additional revenue. Um, the largest piece of that pie is the state program known as the Special Education Circuit Breaker Program, which helps provide a level of reimbursement to our special education costs that qualify, mainly our out-of-district tuition costs, which we've reached, um, a little over a million dollars as we look, uh, at that offset for next year. Um, and then we look at what our total school funds are. We look at our general fund, our grade budget that we would go to the community at the annual town meeting for support. And when you include our, our grants and our revolving accounts, we're looking at a school department and all funds budget of a little more than thirty-six point four million, million dollars. Um, and then we continue to get a tremendous amount of support by the, by the, by the community, by parents, by local businesses, um, that support, and we accept donations on an annual average of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And then our five parent organizations and, and PTOs and PTAs that provide schools help support class field trips, classroom supplies, enrichment programs, um, technology supplies. Um, they just do, do so much for the schools. We couldn't make North Rangay experience what it is today without the support of all of our, our booster groups, as well as our, our five PTOs and PTA organizations that help support an, an annual budget of about seventy-five thousand dollars. So all in all, um, this is, you know, all these things certainly go into the, you know, making the, the North Rangay budget from a funding perspective, and the North Rangay educational experience is what it is, um, as of, um, today. So if you're on to the next slide, um, what I wanna talk about, and we had a budget workshop, as you know, on April first, where we stood at that point in time of, and what the budget gap was, and we sort of worked shop to this number. So this is the budget gap that would get us based on our recommended budget. And as you know, we looked at a few different scenarios between our recommended budget and what was level services, and recommended was about one percent higher than, than level services from a percentage basis to our budget. Um, but the, based on the, the revenue plan as it was presented to us at the beginning of April, we have a slight update to that, which I'll get to in a moment, based on a finance planning team meeting that took place Thursday last week. Um, we were about five hundred and eighty-five thousand, three hundred and eighty-one dollars short of a recommended budget, and about three hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars short of a, of a level services budget, which we worked shop to April first. So, um, certainly, you know, any reduction to what we're recommending is, is, um, challenging. and it certainly creates a lot of debate and difficult decisions as the administrative team and the school committee, you know, work. Um, you know, in the coming weeks to set priorities and, and make some very difficult decisions. Um, we were notified at the finance planning team and much, certainly we're in a very unprecedented situation as everyone can certainly appreciate with what the, the state faces, with what the, the nation and then the state and then the local, local districts on the micro level certainly face in the coming weeks, in the coming months, with our response to any impact to the COVID nineteen virus. And I think it's fair to say what we sort of heard from, from town officials, from, from finance committee, at the finance planning teams, you know, the, the chairs and vice chairs of our, of our select board, our finance committee, our school committee, and certainly our um, town administrator and town finance director, who are working very, very hard to, to navigate a very, um, you know, difficult situation and, and a very unpredictable financial terrain that, that, that we're faced with. Um, to try to make an FY twenty-one budget work with some very difficult, unknown assumptions. So, you know, I think it's fair to say there's some additional work to be done. Um, but what I'd like to do, Patrick, if you want to go to the next slide. Um.
I, I.
Yeah.
With the twelve second. I just, yes, I just want to add that five hundred and eighty-five thousand dollar deficit. So that was, as Michael was saying, that was the previous finance planning meeting that before our budget workshop. At the last one, the numbers, it looks like I think we're about, the, the, at the last one, the recommendation was to keep local receipts con, um, level from twenty, and FY twenty to FY twenty-one, and to keep the eight level from twenty to twenty-one.
Right.
That accounted with a, for another perhaps a hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars of cuts.
That's correct. Yeah.
And, and I will tell you right now that it might be worse than that because frankly, there were concerns that even keeping state budget, you know, numbers level or even local receipts level with what's been going on in the, in the economy might not be enough. There was numbers thrown around about seeing a budget decrease of three to eight percent from FY twenty to twenty-one. So that's where, ju- just to throw in here, the five eighty-five number, realistically, we're a hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars away from even being there. Sorry to interrupt your Michael.
No, that's perfect. Yeah, absolutely. So thank you, um, Mr. Buckley. That's, so that's exactly what certainly occurred on Thursday. So what I would like to do is at least for the time being is walk through, you know, certainly for the community that may not been at the April first budget workshop. What the um, administration, there's one slight change, which I'll get to, but what the administration recommended in workshop to the committee. Um, at that workshop, I'm working off a higher number now because I'm working off our recommended budget. And we were kind of workshop to the, the level services at that meeting. Uh, what I would like to do is show you the, the impact of some of the, the positions and what would be to the budget to balance that original number. And as Mr. Buckley just alluded to, this would, would not quite meet the requirement of the revised revenue plan, given um, the uncertainty that does exist in conversation with uh, um, both state and local officials. It, it, we feel like they actually certainly back off on some, some local receipts and back off on some state aid. Um, and we would be about an additional, right at the moment, about a hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars still short of a, of an FY twenty-one balanced budget. So when the administration kind of presented this list that's before you on the slide, um, certainly none of these, um, you know, this, this is always a very difficult process, putting any type of position that we were very hopeful of achieving. Um, either whether it had been a new position that I just walked through a moment ago, or a position that we had currently that we may need to do without for a period of time is, is certainly, um, you know, not where we want to be. Um, but we certainly try to, when we approach putting together a list like this, we always try to do, do so in such a way that would be certainly a, a least harmful situation to, to the academic classroom. Uh, we, we don't take the reductions of staff lightly or, you know, reducing, um, you know, reductions in force decisions, reductions in staff. So we've certainly tried to do that in such a way that would minimize that impact to the greatest extent possible. So the first three positions on this list, um, I just walked through, and, and those were new positions that were part of our strategic plan or a new position that was, we were hoping to achieve oper- operationally. Um, so the first three that we would put on here would be positions we don't have now. As I just said, these are not positions that, or people that we have today. But they would be positions that we were recommending that we would then certainly defer or, or back off from, from being able to fund in FY twenty-one. So that would be the elementary teaching and learning coordinator, the reading specialist. Those were the two identified priorities by the administrative team. And then our PS twenty twenty-one, and it would be the floor custodian that we were hoping to achieve. So we'd have to wait to, to do those three positions. We then have three positions. Uh, this, this next position is a position that again, we don't have currently. Um, but you may have, I've been presenting budget updates throughout the fiscal year, and there was, we had two folks in central office that um, left at the end of last year, at the beginning of this fiscal year, for a variety of, of life-changing decisions, retirement and so forth. And we were not successful at, at, at um, finding the right fit for those positions. So we've been kind of doing, doing without about a one point seven five FTE positions in kind of central office, kind of sort of the, the data, the data world. And we've been making those work with, with spreading some of these duties out um, against existing staff or in some cases contractual um, you know, small amounts of money to, for certain hours to get some of this, this done. And we were hoping to kind of take those duties and consolidate that into another central office support position. That would be um, a combination of what that one point seven five FTE did from the data standpoint for some human resource, personnel-related duties, um, and, and make that kind of a one position. We, we, we worked harder than a central office team to develop a job description. So this, what this would mean is we would defer or not go forward with that position. And it would mean we would just would continue to do um, what we are currently doing uh, to fill, to fill this need and the responsibilities from a data perspective and an HR perspective. Um, the next two positions are positions that are, you know, somewhere at a district level, ones at the middle school that are academic teaching positions. There are folks that are due to retire. Um, and we would certainly kind of defer the, the hiring of these, these positions and, and look to sort of certainly fill the void, um, in some cases by trying to reallocate additional resources. And when we, when we do that, the, the desire, the, the goal would always be not to impact, uh, you know, as much of the, the classroom operation and class size as, as we can. Um, and, you know, certainly different challenges um, with recommending this or the, by having these two positions. Challenges on the, on the technology um, integration and, and specialist side or technology support and, and, and dealing with, with um, technology tickets and so forth. But we would certainly try to be as creative as we can um, to, to fill this, this, this void by the loss of these two positions. It, it would not mean a loss of, of a, of a, of a staff member there or, or staff that would not lose their jobs since, since this is due, due to, so certainly our data is due to attrition. Um, so that's where those two positions stand. The next position, which is the seventh position on this list, is we had recommended in a, a, a grade level position um, at grade one at one of the elementary schools. Um, the enrollment there, we felt um, kind of warranted that not to try to put a, a primary grade at, at an enrollment level potentially above twenty-two. And, you know, that, the enrollment is always, the increase from kindergarten to grade one is somewhat a moving target. So this would um, certainly, kind of, we would not fund that position. And there's a chance we might be dealing with a little bit of higher enrollment in that cohort of students than we'd want. And we'd have to certainly watch that, watch that. Current numbers would show that the enrollment would be around twenty-one students. Um, but there was a chance with new move-ins and so forth, um, folks needed to go into private, you know, kindergarten situation or something to that extent. In fact, the enrollment might increase. So, so that could be certainly an, an impact on class sizes in the primary grade level at L B elementary schools. Um, the next two areas are not in the personnel areas. Um, we had added a fifty thousand dollar line item to help support the one-to-one program that we've fully implemented this year from grade seven through grade twelve with the Chromebook devices. Um, we were looking to move that initiative from what, what has been a capital initiative to an operating initiative um, in FY twenty-one because it's really embedded as part of our curriculum. Um, this would defer that at least one more year. Um, we are somewhat okay for FY twenty-one. It's not the, the worst thing. And we all know, and we've all learned how important technology is, um, certainly in the last several weeks, more than we, we even had an appreciation for um, just a few short weeks ago. Um, and we do have the, the, we do have grant funding from an air mark state grants that is, that we still have um, availability towards that could be made to, to fund um, replacement in this, in this program to, to fund the, the new seventh, incoming seventh grade. So um, it's not the, the, you know, the worst thing that we'd have to defer that. It doesn't have the largest of, of impact. Um, we're still about fifty-three thousand, eight hundred dollars short, and I, I think when I presented it, I, I, I made a mistake honestly at the budget workshop. And I presented that, you know, to the three hundred and twenty-four thousand dollar member, forgetting that that sixty thousand dollars was not in the level services budget. It was in the recommended budget. So when I went back after that meeting and reconciled, I still discovered that we were actually still a fifty-three thousand, eight hundred dollars short. So what we're proposing tonight is we'd have to look, and we've done this in the past, at other um, expense areas. Uh, we'd have to look at some, some, what our staffing turnover attrition savings are. I think we could maybe pick up an additional twenty to twenty-five thousand dollars by being a little bit more aggressive in our attrition assumptions of, of, of staff turnover savings. And then we'd have to look at certain lines, non-educational lines, um, you know, some areas around, you know, district supplies, you know, some, some legal costs and, of costing some certain areas to, 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 to balance off the budget. And I can, you know, it, it certainly the workshop, I can provide a little bit greater detail on, on areas we would look to, but they're all areas we've certainly looked to in the past. Um, so a combination of doing these things, had the, the revenue plan not changed on last Thursday, um, with reducing these seven positions, um, would mean we would, would have had a balanced budget. And we would essentially had, you know, an FTE standpoint, almost the same amount of FTE, a slight reduction in what we have today. Um, so what this budget does fund in the sense of new positions is it does fund um, some new um, elementary positions due to enrollment, this situation, um, not to the extent we desired, but it does address some areas. And it does fund the two academic middle school positions um, to achieve the, the foreign language expansion and some of the um, areas that we, we began last year. Those were really two areas we felt we could not go, um, given, uh, we didn't want to take a step back at the new school curriculum program. And we didn't want to put any more risk with the elementary class sizes by going any further um, reductions there. Um, so that's kind of where we would stand. Again, I'll just remind everyone that we're about a hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars short. Um, that we'd have to go back into the drawing board, they have a, a workshop scheduled later on and, and, and start looking at other areas. Um, but from a budget conclusion standpoint, I, I presented this slide in, in the past. What does this kind of revised budget do? Uh, well, I think it achieves what's in the, 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 um, black font where it certainly, those laws let me our employee, our contractual obligations with employees and employee unions. We, we certainly need to make sure we do that. It does, to a certain extent, maintain um, some additional staffing to maintain student-student ratio, particularly at the elementary level. Um, although there's a little bit more risk in that, in that now than it was previously. It does move forward with the middle school, secondary level middle school programs I just mentioned, and extending foreign language and, and STEM. Um, where it does not do with these red, red um, areas to what we had hoped. It does not provide the administrative support for the elementary teaching coordinator and the curriculum professional development, supervision and evaluation area. Um, it does not add an additional floor custodian to help us really be well positioned to meet the operational needs of all five schools. Although I, I, I do think we're, we're, we're making buy, we're making do with pretty well with what we have. That would have been great. And it would have really allowed us to be in good position to deal with and, and stack her out and to be able to, to, to adjust to those, to those needs. But we would continue to operate as we've been operating, and I think between contractual services and our in-house cleaning staff, which continues to do an exceptional job. We, I, I still feel like we're going to meet, meet our operational needs, certainly. And um, it would delay the, it would delay moving this initiative into the operating budget. And with an additional fifty-three thousand dollars, but that really does just, it just elevates some levels of risk uh, in certain line items, um, based on unknowns or uncertainties or, or dealing with the unforeseen. Um, but overall, I think it does allow us to, to, to meet our operational costs, to, to maintain the five schools and, and surrounding. Um, so if you go to the next slide, which I do want to touch a little bit upon financial risks and, you know, this new COVID nineteen environment that we're dealing with. So, you know, this certainly one of the biggest areas of, of unknowns in any budget or biggest valuables in the school department budget is there's always in the level of inherent risk. Always exists, and there's always the potential for outside placements. That exists um, today, and it, it will always be there. Um, and, you know, that number of those can change quickly. Uh, um, despite what, despite where we're at and that we certainly, there's, there's going to be challenges in the weeks and months ahead. You know, I, I still think we're in relatively solid position to deal with some unforeseen costs in this area. Um, town was very supportive in adding a stabilization. Um, a budget to address some unforeseen special education costs last year at town meeting um, with some seed funding that is available. Um, and, you know, we're hoping to meet our, our obligation, and I think we will at this point, of the prepaying payment of tuition that we're legally able to do. And I, I still think we'll be able to, to meet that. Um, and our circuit breaker funding at the moment is in very good financial standing. So I, I, I think it's an area of risk, but I'm not super alarmed at the moment. Um, our revenue estimates may not meet the projections. So this, this is certainly an unknown. Um, you know, I, I think as we evaluate the extent of the closure, once we know uh, what that, what that is in the coming weeks, uh, we'll go beyond May fourth and so forth. Uh, I think we'll know what the right thing to do here is in terms of issuing potential refunds for disruption. It's fair to say in certain programs, some refunds may be necessary, and, and we want to certainly do, do the right thing there. Um, but certainly that, that may have an impact on, on meeting some revenue projections. I'm not at, again, I'm not at a point right now where I'm definitely alarmed and want to start changing some budget subsidies, amounts and offsets from FY twenty-one, but the risk is certainly there. And it's going to certainly be a need to, to take some really close look, look at that in the coming weeks. Um, teacher attrition savings, you know, so it might be taking a little more risk on by kind of balance that remaining fifty-three thousand at the moment with some additional assumptions here. Um, nothing we haven't done in the past, but the, the risk is certainly there. Utility costs can, can be variable. Um, carryover assumptions, again, this is kind of goes hand in hand with the second bullet. Um, if we do start issuing refunds, you know, that we may have a challenge reading some of the, some of the uh, assumptions we made early on in the budget process by what, some of the, what our revolving accounts will look like. Snow and ice remains uncertain. You know, we've dealt with more and more unforeseen building maintenance needs, particularly at the elementary schools um, in certain areas around boilers and, and electricity needs and plumbing needs. Um, as those buildings certainly, um, you know, certainly are the, the, the older buildings. Um, and our food service program certainly is in an area where it's, we're not taking in a lot of revenue. Uh, we're not, obviously, we're not taking in any, any uh, food sale revenue. So we're losing a lot of revenue this year. So it'll certainly be less reserves. Um, and certainly a balance in this account at the end of this year. There, there's no, no possible way of avoiding that. Every, every district, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, if not the, the nation, will be dealing with that. And North Rangay is, will not be unique in that. Um, and so it's overall, there's going to be less reserves to maybe address unforeseen. So, yeah. You know, and I'm saying all these to, to alert you, and it's, it's nothing that I don't think you, I hadn't said before. Uh, but certainly the, the COVID nineteen and the situation we're in has all certainly heightened, you know, these areas. Um, which I think we all can appreciate. If we go to our last slide, and I'm certainly open up to, to questions and discussion. Uh, as we go to the next steps, uh, we're going to certainly have. Uh, as we go to the next steps, uh, we're going to certainly have to keep doing discussions with the finance planning team about available revenues. I think we're going to meet almost weekly or every ten days or so in the coming weeks. Um, we know we have more work to do now, it's on the meeting that happened on on Thursday, and I I really appreciate the, you know, everyone's efforts on in that meeting and and the the efforts that certainly Michael Gilberto, town administrator, and Liz Warwick, who are working tirelessly to to try to mitigate, um, the situation, uh, you know, that that we're in, so there's certainly some difficult decisions to to be made. Uh, we have another budget workshop on April twenty ninth, I think that will certainly be necessary as as we know there's more work to do, so I think we'll have the good thing about the April twenty ninth date is we'll have one more finance planning team meeting prior to that. Where we'll be able to see if anything changes and maybe, um, work be workshopping maybe a more firm number. The school committee was set to vote on May fourth, that there could be some flexibility there with the with the uncertainty around the town meeting date, but we'll at at the moment, we'll still operate, that we'll plan to vote the budget on May fourth. And maybe we do their presentation to the finance committee on May sixth, town meeting is still June eighth right now, and then we'll certainly await what wait what's going to happen at the state level. Um, as as the situation is currently at, if the impact to FY twenty will certainly have a compounding impact to FY twenty one, that's just the reality, if if there happens to be some statewide cuts that come down and actually impact FY twenty in the form of what's known as ninety C cuts. Um, mid-year cuts to state aid that will have a compounding effect to FY twenty one. So, um, as Mr. Buckley alluded to earlier, we're looking at between three and eight percent of of state revenues being down. So we're going to have to watch that conversation very, very closely. And then we'll continue to have a very healthy, healthy discussion in the weeks ahead, and certainly will need to be difficult decisions in this climate. Um, but I remain hopeful and and confident that all the folks involved at the town level, the school level, the local level, um, school, you know, certainly I'll be on the school committee and 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 Dr. Daley and our administrative team will work very, very hard to develop a budget that that will work for North Reading, um, and try to to minimize any impact on the educational experience. With that, I will open up any questions.
Thank you very much, Michael. Um, just to cut, I I want to add one thing and then open up for questions too, but just on the schedule, there was talk at the finance planning team meeting about possibly town meeting being pushed back even further. Because obviously this is a an unusual time where nobody really knows how long this is going to go or the impact. So our timelines maybe get pushed out a little bit, they were even saying, I mean, there's even the possibility of not funding a full year at a time, but it just just kind of opening up that possibility. For for comments and questions, I'm going to ask that we try to do two different phases. Um, the first phase is comments and questions on the budget right now, as what we've worked shop, sort of comments on that, this is a budget hearing, I do know there are some members of the public that are listening right now as well. Um, and so I want to comment about that. And then when that is done, I would love to have a brief discussion with the committee members about guidance for the further cuts that are most likely going to be needed. Because I have had a few members of the public reach out about some suggestions, which I, to be perfectly honest, I'm not in favor of, but ultimately, the budget is the, you know, the superintendent, Mr. Connelly's and all the school committees, and so I do think it's worth having, you know, five, ten minute discussion on a couple of ideas and potential further cuts that could be made. But first, I just want to go around and see if anybody has any comments or questions on the cuts that are presented in, you know, the in the PowerPoint that Michael just went over. Any comments overall on the budget? So I'll start with Chris again, do you have any comments or questions?
Uh, no, not that.
Right, I think it has nothing. Rich, any comments or questions?
So I have some questions, I don't know if this qualifies for the first part of your discussion or the second half part of your question, but they are along the lines of. So let's talk about custodian for a second. We we aspire to schools closing and certainly just after schools closing, uh, we, schools have been undergoing, uh, I believe we we term them enhanced cleaning procedures. Um, if those if if the if that becomes the new norm, which is certainly possible, it's not likely. Will our current staff without the floater custodian be able to support on a on a full year basis that sort of enhanced cleaning that that we have seen that has been necessary, um, through the early days of this, uh, uh, coronavirus situation?
Yeah, great, great question, question, and, you know, I I think it's, I think we we certainly could. I I I'm, you know, we have, we have a very, very capable custodial staff. Um, they do an exceptional job. And, um, you know, we worked hard at at finding the right kind of allocation between the the campuses and the and the schools. Um, to to be able to, you know, address, uh, certain situations and when there when there are your staff that may be out for any reason, be able to be in a good position to 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 cover those needs. Um, you know, I I think to certainly present some 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 challenges, some additional challenges and you know, should there be, um, you know, additional kind of touch point type cleaning? Um, you know, that's certainly more than what what had been, um, standard practice. Um, you know, I think I think we could certainly be in a position to address those, um, but perhaps uh, there could be a need for number one, maybe some some additional overtime cost cost in turn to to hit some areas at times, um, I've I've certainly thought about that. And then potentially a need to at at times supplement some services with some con with some, you know, outside, you know, contractual services if if needed. And I think we do have some available funding to to address that. Um, and we'll have to kind of just pay very close attention to it, you know.
Thanks, so I I guess I I guess overall, this, you know, our our standard process, which is now just my second year sort of this, but um, it 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 continues to make sense to me and and we'll work through whatever the number that we that the finance committee comes up with, but it it's a little, future is more opaque now than it ever is and I I just I just worry about things that we can't that we can't anticipate, or we can anticipate, but we don't know exactly what's going to happen, and that that was one example, but I can come come up with a dozen other ones.
Yeah, absolutely.
Um, from from additional professional development needed to to enhance the a potential, you know, online, you know, more prevalent online curriculum, I mean, there's hundreds of things you can think of.
Right.
I guess I guess it's too much in this future to, too much in the unknown to 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 address, but uh, it doesn't feel like we have a whole lot of flexibility, especially since we're got to get to a a newer, uh, it looks like lower number, uh, to deal with any any of the any of the surprises that may come down the pike as a result of the COVID nineteen.
Yeah. Yeah, no, it's absolutely a fair question, and we was talked about it at the finance planning team as well, it was it was brought up and um, certainly the areas you you highlighted tonight is certainly areas that, um, we we certainly are becoming more increasingly aware of that we have to take a much closer look at, absolutely.
Okay, uh, Janine, anything? Janine? Perhaps she dropped off or muted some? So I'll I'll just, and I I see.
Sorry about that, I I lost my screen. Um, hmm, my question kind of has to do with, um, the revenue plan that we see in finance planning. Um, where they break out the, um, cost of ensuring employees, and if we said we wanted to hire fifteen employees, um, they kind of put that into our budget, that if we're not going to hire said ten employees, will that money come out?
That's a great question, Janine, that's a question I had as well, my my understanding is that they it very well could come out, so because of the the fact that we're not funding any new FTEs under this revised scenario. I think the original revenue plan, as you just highlighted, did did include the assumption that it would be some some new, um, FTEs, you know, benefit eligible positions. So I do think that it would be a potentially of a fixed cost reduction. Um, so based on last Thursday, I I think the hundred and fifty three thousand number was kind of like a worst case. And because it could be a fixed cost savings based on the benefit health insurance, it could be with the rain, I think, if nothing changes, but now, you know, there's still some uncertainty, is probably between seventy five thousand and a hundred and fifty three thousand. But that's that's a very, very good point.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, excellent point, Janine, and that's something when I talked to Michael before, because we don't even know that number, I don't even think we can start thinking about the suggestions, the other changes yet until we know exactly what that number is and what's included in it. But I just worry that, yeah, I just worry the big number is going to go up and then hopefully that can offset a little bit of it. So my 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 comments first, so perform with Michael, thank you again for doing this, I know you about spent a lot of time on this. Um, even though even though you tell me it's going to be ten minutes, I won't hold that against you. The the only oh, two comments first, um, only positive that I really want to point out here is that included in this, which wasn't highlighted, but there are some members of the public here. Um, this will be the fewest number of other district placements for special education in a number of years. I think there's been a lot of work done, um, to try to be able to educate our students within the within the district, and so just want to make sure we call that out. Um, I'm very sad that we are not even starting to address the full day kindergarten expenses. Uh, that is something that I have been very concerned about, um. I will also say I'm very concerned if people hear this about next year, because I know there's going to be families that are in very tough economic situations, and I hope that if there are any parents that do want to send their kids to full day and they're struggling, that they reach out to the school and let us know, because I I hate that a student can't get the education that the parent wants to provide that they think is necessary. Um, I advocate a full day kindergarten, I think many people are here, and I I hate that we can't address it here, and I worry that that fee will be a very high burden next year for some people. Um, you know, as I mentioned last time, this budget, not level services, we're not going to be close to level services, which is disappointing. Um, but we also, I think we all understand we're in an unprecedented time right now. Um, only other comment, I mean, I I'm concerned about being able to balance this year, come out this year, you know, without a huge loss, I I know you mentioned refunds and it's really tough, we're going to talk a little bit about the contract later, but that impacts it. My only real question for for this part of it, Michael, is with regards to digital learning, I know some of the positions that are being cut are digital learning. This all came up at finance planning, and I I'm just very nervous that like if if there is a a need for this again next year, I think the fact that we've, I mean, I think the foresight of a lot of the administrators in getting one-to-one devices as soon as we can, you know, Brad Jones helping to, you know, get that plan in place quicker and having these digital learning specialists in the schools has really been beneficial, and we're seeing that benefited now. And I just really worry about how we how do we cope if we lose those positions and and how many are left and like where where does that fall? I don't know if that's for you, Dr. Daley.
Um, yeah, it's a great question, and it certainly came up last Thursday, and um, you know, I we certainly we still have a digital learning, you know, digital learning specialist, um, we would essentially be going from about five to to four under this, um, scenario. Um, so I think where we would lose some of the support is certainly you know, district level, um, your support mainly at, you know, the the secondary level. Um, as well as, you know, that that district level position also don't have data technicians. Um, so that that certainly would be a a more of a challenge to be able to address um, and stay on top of the various kind of, you know, maintenance tickets that, you know, that may come in. Um, you really are across the district, it's really a more reliant to our you know, network administrator to who's, you know, addressing the needs of the entire network, to address some 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 lower level maintenance tickets as well as our our data manager, who's who's, you know, managing our system, who's in helping with record, state reports and so forth. Um, so that's kind of an impact of kind of outside the classroom by by losing sort of a district level position. Um, and then we would certainly work to try to be as creative as we as we can with technology team to minimize the classroom impact, but I I think it's it's fair to say it's certainly going to have have an impact and um, I don't know if Dr. Daley wants to go into into any more details.
Thanks, Michael, thank you. As mentioned before, the two positions that are not to be retired are both digital learning, but I had conversations with Dr. Downs and Dr. O'Connell, and our commitment overall as a district is to the expansion of the middle school program. And so we believe in that curriculum and that program moving forward, and so it's a difficult decision if we have to make it, but that's that's what we would do, and what that means is like we often need to do is we need to figure out, it it, you know, we have a lot of very hands-on administrators, those are very hands-on network admin. And it's going to be challenging to to do this, but it means that Dr. Downs and myself and other people are doing more um, support that than, uh, than we than we're able to do currently. Um, and we'll we'll be creative, we'll try to think of some other ways to to have other digital learning folks pitch in a little bit more. Um, but those are absolute positions that we need to to bring back, it 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 cannot be a long-term solution. Especially that K twelve digital learning specialist, um, again, in a district without technicians. Those folks are providing not only the, um, the digital learning support for our teachers, but they're also providing, uh, tier one, we'll call it tech support, uh, you know, fixing smart boards, fixing printers, getting in the classrooms, installing software. Um, and and certainly with the one-to-one program, all the troubleshooting that needs to happen there to repair some devices and get them back to season. That that's, you know, these are the people that are doing, so, um, not a great way to be cutting, to be cutting in, but but we will, uh, we will figure it out, again, of history here and our preference, um, whenever possible, if we can, if we can not fill retiring physician as opposed to cutting another physician, um, that is our preference, and that's usually what we try to do.
Thank you very much. Um, so before I move to the next, do are there any other comments or questions from the committee or anybody in the public? Okay, so moving on, the the other discussion I wanted to have very briefly, um, I have a couple of members of the public reach out to me. Um, and and I do think it's worth that we discussing very quickly to see what the committee's thoughts are. But the one person reached out and and was knew that we were looking at hiring a superintendent position, um, which I think we all are aware of. And their thought was if the position is open right now, and there's going to be tough, it's going to be a tough revenue year, whether or not it is prudent to hire that position, um, or fill that position right now and whether that could be delayed. Um, and so I do, I know that I've talked to Dr. Daley, um, and I have my thoughts, but I will share first, but, um, I I want to hear other people's thoughts as well, I know that when I was talking to Dr. Daley, and and I'll be honest, like I I've been learning what that position is more and more over the last couple of years. But I think, you know, if 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 the finance committee or finance planning team decides that we think state revenue is going to drop by ten percent and there's a ten percent loss, I think every job is on the, every position is on the on the cutting block, so you know, this is just more for, we're talking about another hundred, hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Where do we start with? And I would not propose starting with the superintendent position. To me, I think it's a leadership position, I think you need leaders at at the top. You know, I think somebody here is assistant superintendent, and they think that it's, you know, an assistant role where there's somebody else that's the leader, but this position has been called different things over the last twenty years or so. It was, it's basically been the director of curriculum for a number of years, and it really is, you know, the the leadership position in that role. Um, so I'd be concerned about cutting a director type role, I think you need leaders in times that are tough, and I think watching Dr. Daley and and Mr. Connelly both work in the last, you know, couple of months has really shown how important leadership is. Um, I think that teaching and learning is obviously a critical role in a school. I mean, we if we're not working on educating our children out of what we, I don't know what's a higher priority role in curriculum. Um, I think we're already taxing our administrators, I think some of the positions that are being cut or in the central office, I think there's other positions that would put more responsibility on Michael in particular and and Patrick as well. And so I I think we cannot burn out these two gentlemen, and I worry that not adequately supporting them with the leaders they need would do that. Um, I I also think Um, I, I also think that assistant superintendent position involves a lot of out-of-school, out-of-district meetings. And one of my huge concerns would be if Dr. Daly or a building principal was covering those meetings, and there was ever to be, you know, an emergency that happened in a building or in the district, and, you know, one of the building principals was not there because they got sent to, you know, try it in for a meeting. And, you know, we needed that, that leader in the building and they weren't there, I would, you know, I, I would just regret that the rest of my life, that they weren't there to, you know, be part of that response. And so that's a very big concern I have. Um, right now, I think Dr. Daly is directly overseeing thirty people, and I don't think a superintendent can do that. I, I don't think it's good management, I don't think it's good leadership to over, you know, overextend that. Um, there are certain positions in the assistant superintendent role which requires, you know, a first level of appeal, and then Dr. Daly would be the second level of appeal, and you can't, you know, have Dr. Daly being both of those. Um, and this is just not a position that we have, you know, that you can just add in in a few months, like, some people are thinking, well, we can add it back in October. Well, the people that are up for the, at least some of the candidates for the assistant superintendent position are building principals. The reason that we didn't hire it when Dr. Daly was appointed superintendent was we did not wanna disrupt the building. To not do this now would mean putting it off another full year, which is, to me, unacceptable. Uh, we formed a committee, they did the work, they had great candidates, and so to me, I think this is a position we need to move forward with. Um, the other, other thing is, we're gonna talk about contracts a little bit, I think that's another thing where, you know, I, I know that it's, it may seem tone deaf a little bit to be, you know, talking about ratifying contracts, but at the same time, most contracts are now up right now, and they're gonna be getting their standard separations and, you know, cost of living adjustments, I don't know that why, why we. I think we have to do it for all unions as well. But I am interested to hear from the other members of the committee if they also agree that we should prioritize keeping that assistant superintendent role, or if people disagree with that. And so I know that's a lot of information, but, um, Rich, I know you usually are okay starting, so would you mind, do you have any comments or questions or thoughts?
Yeah, I think Scott, that I agree with the way you framed that almost a hundred percent. Um, I think that, as you said, given what we think now is gonna be an additional, what, a hundred and something thousand dollars that we have to go to, that's, that's one thing, and I agree a hundred percent that I would, and, and correct me if I'm not catching what you were saying, but I think you were saying that, given the additional hundred and something thousand dollars we have to, we have to get to, this would not be a position I would consider cutting at this point. If, if, if the, if the revenue drop is more draconian than that, then, like you say, everything's on the table, we'll have to sort of take a holistic look at everything, but, um, um, I think that the experience, you know, obviously, the, the whole, the whole team has been put through a stress test in the last, uh, couple of months. Um, and while they've come through it admirably, the stress part of it, uh, can't be emphasized enough, and, uh, and to think that that stress would level would potentially be there for a full year, I, I don't see how you can expect people to, uh, to maintain that. So I, I agree with your, your, uh, framing of all that.
Perfect, thank you, yeah, and, and again, if we're talking about putting twenty-eight kids in a first grade classroom, then it's a different discussion. But if we're talking about being able to maintain somewhat reasonable class sizes and, you know, I, I, I think this is an important position. Um, Chris, do you have any thoughts or comments?
Uh, I, I, I do thought, I, I mean, I think that there are well over a, a dozen excellent reasons why we live in this position right now. And, uh, I agree with Rich, uh, that you stated all of them so eloquently, something I can add to it, but, uh, but yeah, you, you, you threw everything at the wall there, and I think, uh, those are excellent points, I hope that, uh, that people take that to heart, it's an incredibly important position. It's one that, uh, has been, been done by, uh, a team of people ready to show in, and, uh, and I don't see that sustainable model, like, if you need a full-time person in there doing it and, uh, and going in that position.
Perfect, thank you, Diana?
Yes, Scott, I am in complete alignment with every statement that you made in this regard, and I absolutely would not be in favor of, um, considering to cut this position. I think it's a priority, um, I think we need to treat it that way, so, um, thanks for, as everyone else said, articulating that so well, um, I couldn't agree more.
Thank you, I, I did have time to prepare for this, because people reached out to me about it, so, um, and then Janine, any comments? Do you, are you in agreement?
Um, no, actually, I think he shouldn't be replaced, I'm just kidding. Um, um, I think, um, obviously it needs to be filled in so quickly, uh, curriculum is the driving force behind everything that this school does. Um, and I have complete faith in Mike, um, being able to be the wizard that he is and find any of the monies that we need to get that position spoke.
Perfect, thank you, yeah, and I, I think some, I think sometimes the, the public doesn't understand that, you know, they, they see that Michael is the assistant superintendent, and they think, well, why do you need a second one? But, you know, you know, I, I, I am impressed by Michael every day that I talk to him, but I don't think we're gonna be sending him to set the curriculum for the district either. And so I think we all have different roles and different responsibilities, and I think we need that position in addition. This is not a reflection of, you know, we don't have adequate people here right now, we've always had a different finance person and a different curriculum person, so. Um, Dr. Daly, Michael, I don't know, I mean, I just, I just think it was important that some people reached out to me to at least add that discussion, that, you know, I think, I think the marketing orders are clear and that is a priority still.
Great, and I appreciate the, the words that everyone said, you know, having served in the position for ten years, um, in, in one form or another, and knowing that the position existed, uh, for many years before. There's been a central office team of four, with, with student supporter, um, finance, curriculum, and superintendent. Um, I can't imagine doing this job without it, I have especially done, you know, two jobs since January for the reasons, as you mentioned, that, you know, I did not want to, uh, disrupt the school's mid-year. I've had, um, various folks filling in and doing quite, quite a bit of, um, delegation of some of the responsibilities, but on a day-to-day basis, there's, there's a lot of, um, work that I do, and, and I, I, I like to remind folks too, that, you know, when we think of it, a lot of folks don't understand what the position is. Curriculum is one piece, unfortunately, and one of my goals is to try and make it more about curriculum, but I, I've often said it's about twenty percent of what I get to do. The human resource part alone, uh, is huge, everything from the, the hiring of new staff to getting people up and running in the mentor program, um, getting all of the, the rank advancements and things like that moved out, without the HR position, without, without, um, any advancements there. To do this coming into hiring season, it, it will, will be nearly impossible for me to do that and to do my job as well. I mean, this six-month period here from January to June was a short-term fix, where I took on additional work and, and responsibility in order to, um, not disrupt the schools and, and to try to get the best pool of candidates, and it was something I was willing to take on because I knew it was best for the district, and I knew I would end up getting the best assistant. But I appreciate your support in, uh, in recognizing how important this is, um, to move forward, um, as a position, so I appreciate that.
Okay, any, any more comments or thoughts or questions from anybody on the public hearing? Okay, hearing done, so I'm gonna close the public hearing, I appreciate everybody, and we will move on to the next item in the agenda, which is employment contract. Dr. Daly, are you gonna present on that?
So, uh, thank you, we have, um, shared with you tonight, there are, um, contractual agreements with two groups, the custodians, uh, the North Reading Custodians and also the North Reading School Secretaries Association. And if, uh, these agreements are agreed to tonight, they will now be known as the North Reading School Administrative Admin, uh, Administrative Assistant Association. And so what I've shared with you in your packet, is some additional information about their, uh, the specifics to their contract. They have been, uh, agreed to and ratified by the respective association, and the request tonight is to ratify. I know that we've shared these with you at a decked session, and this would be the ratification of the full contract for both the custodians and the secretaries.
Excellent, so, so we can maybe take these separately, so like, a number from the custodians, it would be, it, it's a three-year contract, uh, the cost of living adjustment over the three years were two percent, three percent, and three percent. Um, I can have a motion to approve the memorandum of contract with the custodians unit?
Uh, Scott, I'd move that, uh, the committee votes to approve the, uh, well, I, I'm gonna see, are we voting on the M, the MOA or on the contract itself?
Patrick, is it an MOA or the, the agreement, the agreement, right?
This, this is the agreement, and then the, the contracts themselves would need to get pulled together, but this is the, the agreement.
The MOA, yeah.
Okay, so I move that we approve the, uh, memorandum of agreements between North Reading Public Schools and the, uh, 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 ASPE, ASPE Council ninety-three local seventeen oh three custodians unit as presented.
A second? Okay, so, any, any further discussion on this? And hearing done, I'll do a roll call, Rich?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
Diana?
Aye.
Janine?
Aye.
An aye and an aye as well, so it carries by zero unanimous, thank you. And now we move on to the next one, which would be, uh, looking for a motion on the, well, first, let me start with the memorandum of understanding, it is also a three-year contract. Um, there are cost of living adjustments of two percent each of the next three years. There is in year one, there is an adjustment to the steps, um, which would add another step and reduce the first step. Um, so it would be a two and a half percent increase in the steps, but the cost of living adjustment would be two percent each of the next three years. Uh, looking for a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding with what would be now the North Reading Administrative Assistant.
I move that the committee votes to approve the memorandum of understanding, uh, between the North Reading Public Schools and the North Reading School Secretaries Association as currently known for, uh, for the new contract as presented.
A second?
Aye.
Any discussion? Okay, I'll do a roll call vote again, Rich?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
Janine?
Aye.
Diana?
Aye.
An aye as well, this also carries by zero unanimous, thank you all. Moving on, uh, superintendent's goals, Dr. Daly, I turn it over to you.
Thank you very much, so I have shared with you here tonight, um, some documents related to my goals. It's been, um, as we've said, it's a little bit different than maybe I anticipated, um, and I'm doing things a little bit differently. So at least one of the goals is substantially impacted, and I've addressed that with you previously, but I did wanna share that there are many things that I have been able to, to, uh, continue to work on. And so the document that's shared with you here is the Formative Assessment Report. And I wanted to just bring you up to speed, I won't spend too much time on this, but what I've done here is I've copied in each goal at its, at its level, and then gave a narrative, uh, update of where I am at this point in the process. So my first goal is very much about, um, the continued highest level of effective strategic leadership for the North Reading Public Schools. As I've mentioned previously, I was actually able to start the new superintendent induction program back in July, that was one of the advantages to being named, um, when I was named, and I was able to start my cohort in July, um, even though I took over in January. So I've been very active with this group, uh, the new superintendent induction program, as well as the Merrimack Valley Superintendent's Association, that Association of School Superintendents. Um, and I have, you know, really come to know folks as we are doing meetings and Zooms and connections, um, on a daily basis. And I think a lot of that work that I've done there strategically with that group has been very helpful to me as a new superintendent. And I certainly feel that a lot of what I've been doing, um, quite publicly, actually, more than I ever expected, to share unified messages from the Merrimack Valley Superintendent's Association in respect to decisions to, to cancel schools, um, for, for the initial few weeks before the governor had declared that, um, were really lessons in leadership and quite substantial influence towards, um, this goal. I also, um, one of the things I'm most proud of, one of the responsibilities that I dedicated this year was, uh, the assistant superintendent responsibility of professional development day. There's a, a full school day on March sixth, that's, um, very, very time-consuming and quite an investment of time, and I was able to meet and train with Mr. Clean, um, along with, uh, Nicole Orlando, my administrative assistant, and she's actually the assistant, uh, administrative assistant to the assistant superintendent. So the three of us worked together to come up with a plan, and I was able, I'm very proud of myself that I was able to back away from that day and really let Mr. Clean and, and Ms. Orlando, um, do a lot of the work to get that day to run, that was one of the duties that I was able to share, and, and I'm very proud of that, I shared that there. And, um, continuing to improve, um, professional development through my learning plan. The second goal, um, is the, um, speaking about, uh, achievements for students at different levels. And so we, we did quite a bit of work, um, in the first few months, um, I really changed some of the ways that we have our school meetings. Um, I've had very different kind of structured conversations with the principals at every building about school visits. And I, I focused on this concept that when I visit their school, I'm observing, the principal observing the teachers. And that, in some ways, was a bit of a shift from, from previous, um, supervisionary visits. And that's about a model that is something that's out of the Department of Ed that we've talked about in my new superintendent induction program. And so, um, in addition to walk-throughs of buildings, which is a chance for me to be visible and to say hi to the students, I'm also in this role to observe the principals doing their job of observing teachers, and we're reflecting, what did we see, did we agree, and we, we had a very good process that was going. We also added something, um, else, which was just the idea of, you know, everybody on Tuesday would have a half hour if they were in classrooms, and this includes every administrator. Um, we wouldn't initiate any new business, Michael would send an email, I would send an email, a principal would send an email, there'd be nothing new, and we knew that from ten-thirty to eleven on those weekdays, we were getting in the classrooms and walking through, and it's, it's been, it's been wonderful. Um, you know, we, we were only able to do it a few times before school let out, but, um, I, I got to do some walk-throughs with Cynthia Conant, I got to do some with Stan Downs, with Kathy O'Connell, I got around, you know, we walked in small teams of two or three, and I think everybody, teachers, everyone has just immediately picked up on just how much more visible we were, um, with, with this initiative, it's something that I certainly hope to continue when we, when we go back, and we're gonna actually talk about, you know, what, what this kind of visibility looks like now that we're into our remote learning, there's ways for us to, um, visit virtual lessons as well. And I know a lot of our administrators are doing that, so, um, might look a little bit different for the next few weeks, but that's something we're gonna continue with there, so I wanted to provide that update.
Patrick, Patrick, one, one quick question, so on the hand up, there, there are boxes for on target, off target, and not started. Were, were any of those, were, were, had you intended to check if you were on target on these goals or not?
Uh, yeah, my understanding is that's what you folks would do, you folks would decide whether, uh, what I'm showing you is whether I am on target. I, I could certainly provide where you, I feel with those, I feel like I am on target with all of them, except for one that's a little bit different, which is, um, which is the next one, um, a little bit, which is about the, you know, part of my entry plan, which was to put out a survey to, to the parents of the community about what they'd like to see in the schools. Um, I've backed off from some of that, that would have been done right around the time that we went on school closing, and I, we're up with us for a three-day meeting. My goal there is to, you know, focus our communication on everything related to the school closing and our remote learning plan, and I did not want to, you know, at this difficult time, ask folks additional information about, uh, you know, what they'd like to see in the schools, what they'd like to see from me. So that was the decision that I made that I shared with you that I think everyone agreed with, so that's why that is where it is. But I, I don't feel that we're very much off target from, um, our original plan of, you know, moving towards some reviews and materials and updates of RPS twenty twenty-five. I still think, you know, I'm collecting a lot of data, it's just very different, it's not a survey that I sent out, but I'm getting a ton of information on the community in quite a different way. So it's not that I'm not going to go back and do some of those things, but I feel like, um, we have a lot of information, and, and I'm also in a very different position. Certainly, I would still go through these exercises because I'm seeing it through a different lens, but I'm not a brand-new superintendent either for the district, I've been here for ten years. But I'm not a brand-new superintendent either for the district. I've been here for ten years and I certainly have a lot of information already about the district. You know, this is the same exercise that I would do had I just started January second, but I started back in July two thousand and, uh, and nine. So the next goal I just wanted to speak to is the cybersecurity program. That program, uh, we started right away. Um, that, we met all of those assignment one, the pre-assessment, the assignment goals. I shared some of the data and the update. And again, my, my goal with this as well is to share some of these, um, more visually with you, but for this time, you know, giving you the narrative. I figured that was what was best at this time. There's so much else that we attended tonight. Um, but as you can see that we have a very high passing rate of, uh, ninety-two percent of all staff that has completed the pre-assessment. In addition to this, we were able to add folks from the community. We have some folks at the town hall, from the fire department, um, and from the police department who are also participating in this. And I think we, we actually have talked with the folks at the, at, at the government, uh, this is a state program that, you know, as much as it seems like this is something we should move away from right now because there's so much else going on, in some ways, uh, being aware of cybersecurity has never been more important. When we talk about, you know, Zoom bombing and phishing scams and, you know, for, now that we're all, uh, doing things virtually, there's so many other ways to, to, uh, prey on staff and students. And it's important for us to be, uh, vigilant with this. So we, we are going to continue with this. We have, uh, some more time for folks to complete assignment one. We're going to move into assignment two and then we're going to be getting our, uh, starting tomorrow. I'm going to be testing out and then it's going to roll out with everyone these phishing simulations that folks will just react to what's happening in their email. And so, um, I, I, I feel like it is a confusing time and there's a lot going on, but at the same time, it's never been more important, I think, for us to continue with that one. We, um, the, the next one is another one that is definitely continuing and it's just a little different than I thought. But we talked about, um, you know, transitioning and using social media and new technologies. Um, I have gone from being a little bit nervous to send a blackboard to, I think I'm, I'm, I'm an expert now. I send them very often. I've educated in multiple ways, something that I've done, I, I think most folks are aware, but I, when I send out, I will send out very often a phone call, an email, but also a text. And the text has a short link right to my blog. And, uh, I've heard from several parents who, who've appreciated the blog because all of my messages, you know, when there's so many messages, they're all in one place. And if you miss one, you can just very easily read yesterday to the day before. Um, all of these things are double posted on our website in, in clear and easy places to, to visit. I've also, um, been using Twitter quite a bit and retweeting and sharing a lot of information there. So I feel like, um, you know, this, this situation has certainly given me quite a lot to talk about and to communicate. And I feel like I have done quite a bit there and, and from what I've heard, so folks have been fairly well achieved, but I'm certainly open to feedback and comment on that. Um, the last one here is about social emotional, uh, learning. And, you know, this goal, there are two main pieces to this. One was our SEL committee, which we, uh, formed. I helped to lead that group. Cynthia Conant and, uh, Catherine O'Connell also played key roles in, in rolling this out and developing a plan. We have a, an incredible plan for next year. We still have one session with our group for this year that we have to meet, but we have a great plan for sort of that second phase of the rollout. This, you know, we have our early adopters on board, but we now need to think about how we get more of our folks involved in this critical, uh, learning. And so we're going to use both the Atavale system, which will build upon educators' goals, and also our new teacher induction program. So we sort of have a captive audience of our non-professional status teachers who are looking for, uh, as contractually, we are rolling out our program in years two and three. So we're going to combine and get a lot of, uh, our teachers trained in this in the next year or two. Um, and, and by the end of that program, we will have, um, quite a substantial number of teachers trained in this program. We're very excited about that. The second part of this is that we have, uh, strategically looked at our K-12 action team, which I've led as assistant superintendent for many years. Um, and I'm, I also see the value in combining because it's a lot of the same folks and a lot of the same work. We're trying to work smarter, not harder, and have less groups that are doing the same thing. And so we've, we've, um, coordinated a lot of our events and a lot of our action teams, um, with the community impact team and some other groups as well. And, and we've got some, um, folks coming to our meetings and getting our numbers up and really getting everybody committed to this social emotional work around the table together. And so we've already done that with a couple of our meetings. We have to cancel our April meeting, um, at this time, but we, we probably will resume and have at least one virtual meeting again this year and certainly to continue this in the future. So there, there was a quite a bit of work that was already done in this, in this arena already this year. And I, I think I, I glossed over it earlier, but under the security, in addition to cybersecurity, um, there's also the school safety committee, which again, I met with a few times prior to the closure. Um, and certainly, uh, I, I've said this before, I can't say enough of how much we've come together as an entire, uh, nu- metrics of police and fire and other folks, but, but the Board of Health and the town administrator. I mean, I think, um, the amount of time and effort and, and great teamwork we've put in coordinating our messages and our, our outreach and our effort has certainly been, um, more than I even ever anticipated. Uh, you know, we had a couple of school safety committee meetings scheduled and I probably met with this team now because of the situation, probably, you know, fifteen, twenty, thirty times, um, including a call earlier today. So it's been a great experience. I've learned quite a bit. And it's hard to believe that I am here at this midpoint of this, um, first, you know, half year, but I wanted to make sure I provided views and updates. So I'm happy to answer any questions, but thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Dr. Daley. I'm going to start with Janine. And so Janine, do you have any comments or questions? And can you also share a little bit, since you have more experience than I do on this? Um, I mean, do we usually, what sort of goal do we usually do on this? Is it just to accept it or do we comment on it? And I, I'd look to your experience here as well and, and your comments here.
Um, well, first I would like to say thank you to Dr. Daley. He's doing an extremely good job. Um, and I would just like to say that. Um, and then secondly, as to the, the, the procedure is generally the evaluation is handed out to the school committee and they, um, assess him on what his goals are and how he's achieved, has achieved them. So, you know, to Dr. Daley's point, we are the ones that would check off, um, on target, off target or not, you know, um, not started. So, um, that would be what we filled out in, I believe, whoever owned the evaluation committee. Um, there should have been a date that we got the package and then, um, assessed it. Um,
Yeah, so Janine's.
And then, can you say that again?
Yeah, so I, I was looking at that, um, since I are on the committee and, uh, uh, the, uh, our return of the, uh, feedback on this mid-cycle report is due in the next meeting. So I, I believe that it's on personized to, uh, make sure you have copies of this and explain how we want it returned. But, um, I, I think, I, I don't remember that we did this last year. Uh,
I don't believe we did in.
Yeah.
So if I, if I may, it may be a little bit, I may be doing it slightly different, first of all. Second of all, because I'm in my first three years, we've got the formative cycle, which is a little bit different. The forms might, you know, might be a little different. So just after Mr. McGowan explained it, my goal was to sort of present it to you tonight publicly. Um, you then can look at it and provide me feedback, um, at this time. And this, and this is to help me to be on target, the way I explain it to our teachers, you know, to, to put me on the right path to make sure I meet those goals that are, that, that are to be met in July and to provide me support and feedback to get there. Um, if you feel that I've not started, that's obviously something I need to start. If I'm off target, I want to know now so that I can course correct and get to, to meet the goals in July. So I think that's exactly right. Um, you would, you would now take this information and then provide comments to give to me again in public at the next meeting.
Right, exactly. I was going to say generally you do it once a year. You don't do it twice a year. So this being the mid, we, had it been a normal year, this would have been the end of the year summary, not the mid-year. Do you know what I'm saying? So, um,
So what I.
We would assess you, but it, it, it's going to be assessed again later.
So what I would say is that I, I think we should take a quick pass at this in, in time for the next meeting. And again, it's, it's really just marking off our thoughts and then we can comment, you know, during the meeting in terms of more specifics, but, uh, and then the real, the real evaluation would be at the end of the year. Um, which, uh, we kind of need to discuss anyway. The whole calendar is a little screwy with the town meeting being moved and the, well, potentially the budget not being resolved until later in the year. So this, um, uh, I mean, at the moment, we don't even have July meeting schedules yet because we haven't discussed the next year's schedule of meetings. But, you know, I think our next meeting from, from tonight is May fourth. Is that what I, is that right?
It, it would be if we, you know, we may have a budget workshop, but yes, the next regular meeting I believe is May fourth.
Right. Yeah. So I, I would suggest that, uh, uh, and, and we can come back to letting everybody comment, but I would suggest that Chris and I get our heads together and, and figure out how we want to handle it. We'll get you guys to forums and then we'll explain how to, uh, uh, you know, we'll, we'll sort of detail how we want to get, get them back and then be ready to present, uh, at that next meeting. Does that make sense for everyone?
Uh, good. Thank you, Rich. So, okay. Diana, any com- any thoughts on progress or anything else?
No, I think we have a good path forward.
Rich?
Uh, no, thank you.
Chris?
Not at this moment. Thank you.
And I'll just say, I think you've done a great job so far, Patrick. And, and, and regardless of what goal we set up for to evaluate you, I think you've had some bigger challenges than anybody could have anticipated and done great with it so far. So thank you very much. So there's no goal needed at this point in time. We will just, uh, comment and plan on having some couple of con- some comments from the committee as a whole at the next meeting. So moving on, we have a routine, routine matters. Yes, you do have a couple of topics to discuss in here, but, you know, I am going to just go in order just so I don't forget anything. Um, we have a couple sets of minutes here. So Janine and Jerome are, are here, are expert on that. Um, I have a motion first and then a motion in a second, and we'll see if there's any errors on the, to accept the open session, March eighteenth with twenty-four minutes.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes for March eighteenth open session as written. I did not see any error.
All second.
Rich? Okay, any discussion or any other comments or changes that anybody noticed? Okay, so we'll do a roll call vote. Janine?
Hi.
Rich?
Hi.
Diana?
Hi.
Chris?
Hi.
And I am an I as well, so unanimous five zero. Thank you very much. And if you would mind, go on to the, uh, March twenty-third, twenty twenty open session meeting.
I make motion to accept the open session, uh, meeting of March twenty-third, uh, as written.
All second.
Any discussion, any changes? Okay, roll call vote again. Janine?
Hi.
Rich?
Hi.
Diana?
Hi.
Chris?
Hi.
I'm also an I, so again unanimous five zero. Thank you. And moving on, we have a budget update and Michael's going to speak about the North Reading, the NRC, uh, memorandum of agreement that, you know, I had some discussions about today as well. So I'll turn this over to you, Michael. Are you still with us, Michael? Did we lose you?
I'm sorry, I'm here. I'm, I'm, I was muted. I was, I was talking. So, uh, thank you, uh, Mr. Blackley. So yeah, and the former budget update tonight is not that kind of traditional financial update, but it certainly has implications on the FY twenty budget. And, um, you know, so there, there was a memorandum of agreement. I do have an update, a favorable update, um, to that agreement, uh, this evening. Um, but I think what, I just want to provide a little bit of context and background between some of the, what's been taking place, um, really statewide, uh, with transportation companies. Um, so there's certainly been a lot of conversation, um, at the state level, the Associate Commissioner of the, um, Department of Education, Jay Sullivan, uh, has weighed in on several conference calls and we've, we've set up a lot of working groups to really go back to, um, the various transportation providers, uh, us being NRT Corporation and trying to work with them to develop, um, really a, a proposal or an MOA or an agreement that kind of works for, for all. Um, yeah, I, I think we've, we've all tried to take the approach that, you know, the, these services, um, you know, this is really a partnership in a way. Um, you know, transportation, uh, the safe transportation of our students in North Reading certainly plays an important role. Um, in, and we are, we're all facing very challenging times financially, um, the companies and our vendors that we've relied on, um, to, to deliver very important services, uh, transportation being, being one, as well as, you know, various others in terms of our special education services, our tuitions, our, our collaborative, our private day schools. Um, you know, they, they're all faced with ma- many of the same challenges and they're all, they're all working on behalf of our students. So I've certainly taken the approach with a lot of my colleagues to try to hear out, um, you know, various vendors, uh, NRT being one of them, and trying to approach this in a way that will assure first and foremost that, you know, when we do resume normal operation and we, and school, school reopen, that we're able to pr- provide the, um, the transportation service to our students, you know, in a safe and effective manner. Um, but certainly, you know, that being said, there's, there's, there's a financial conversation that has to be had. It's, um, you know, what, what really is an appropriate amount for districts to be incurred during the school closure period. And, uh, there's been a team of colleagues that have been working with, uh, NRT Incorporated, um, and certainly myself being one of them and many of the area North Shore Merrimack Valley District that all also contract with NRT, uh, have been having, have all been part of these, these conversations. And so I, I have been pretty to, to a few con- uh, presentations by John Ricarte, the CEO of NRT. And he's, uh, presented, you know, his finances and the situation with his company. Um, and we've tried to work out a, a plan that would, that was kind of work for all. Um, so there, there is an agreement that's in front of you that essentially, and I'll just say before I get to kind of percentage numbers and what is essentially attempts to accomplish is that, um, we would be assured by paying a, a, a percentage of the contractor at school closure period, you know, a continuity of service, you know, service would be able to continue when school does reopen with, with no disruption and, and no impact. That the first and foremost, the, the drivers that we've come to know are North Reading students, are North Reading roots, will be ready to return and resume normal operation when, when needed. Um, so, so those drivers, which is, you know, in a lot of ways, an extension of our, our operation, our employees. Um, this agreement would ensure they would not be, be laid off or furloughed and by NRT and that they would be there, ready to return to North Reading when, when we need them. Um, it also ensures other, other necessities, like the, the proper maintenance, inspection and upkeep of all of our equipment and vehicles. You know, cameras, GPS equipment and obviously the buses and so forth. It would ensure driver, uh, training, safety training on a monthly basis would continue by, by the North Reading team. Um, and if necessary and if needed, it would en- ensure that if we needed NRT to step forward with delivery of mail, um, school supplies, technology, equipment, whatever we may need in the form of transportation during a school closure period, that would also be available, um, at, at no, at no cost. Um, so that, that was kind of the, the objective and the goal. Um, you know, what, what through this conversation, I think some of the things that would be at risk should be not reached in agreement and, and do that in the relatively near future. And, you know, NRT has to kind of react and act and, you know, districts that are going to, you know, try to work with him, uh, work with them and, and those that may not in terms of, you know, what they do for, um, their oper- And, and those that may not in terms of even what they do for, um, their operation, their financial operation and how, how they handle their, their employees. Um, you know, risk of, of not reaching an adequate agreement, you know, could potentially lead to our North Reading. And actually drivers that drive our North Reading routes each and every day, these are the ten routes at all of our, our five schools. Uh, could potentially, you know, essentially would be laid off, uh, and there would be no guarantee that they would be available when school returned. Um, and, you know, when, when school does reopen, whether it be in May or, or, or later in the school year or potentially even next, next fall. Um, there, if that were to be the case, there would be no guarantee that we would potentially have the drivers to, uh, be able to fulfill the, the contract. And, and that, that certainly would be a, be a concern, you know, we, we definitely want the drivers to be there that, that know our routes. That, that, you know, to step back in and, and, and have it, have a minimal of a, of a disruption as, as possible. Um, we, we transport, um, the, the vast majority of students, I think it's about fourteen hundred students. Purchase a, a bus pass or receive a free, a free, a free busing in North Reading, you know, out of the, the twenty, you know, three hundred plus students. So it's definitely, uh, you know, an important part of the operation and we want to ensure that when school does resume, that we can deliver the best, best, best service. That, that's certainly an important part of that. Um, it, it certainly, to me, it's a safety issue, you know, we don't want to have a situation where there's more cars in the road and students, um, you know, forced to, to walk. And, and, you know, down streets with potentially no sidewalks. So I think it's important that we, we try to work out an agreement and that's why I'm here tonight with, with this M L A. I, I think I've kind of heard enough in the many calls and presentations I had been a part of that I was prepared to kind of move the conversation. Um, I will say, you know, at, at that being said, I, I think it's fair to say there's been a lot of healthy debate on what that, um, percentage rate should be. And I've been a part of those conversations. And I think when you look at this and how Mr. McCarthy with NFT has presented that, um, certainly when they bid school bus contracts, there's a lot that goes into, to those costs. Um, not only is, is there, there, you know, regular busing a, a piece of that contract, but, you know, they did that. Um, and if awarded that contract, there's a recognition that there's athletic runs and extracurricular and field trip runs as well. So what we're really talking about here is an assurance that we're going to be paying for that regular busing piece or a portion of that to, to ensure everything that I just presented would be the case. Um, we would not be incurring any costs should there not be, should there be no athletic season this, this spring, um, or any, any school related, uh, field trips. You know, given a, a prolonged school closure. Um, so, so, uh, one, the update that I do have is a percentage that, that's referenced in, in the document. I'm happy to report tonight that, um, Mr. McCarthy has kind of heard some concerns about that percentage rate through, um, various business managers. And even team collaborators, board of directors with a team of superintendents. And he has gotten more aggressive on, on working his, his costs and his team, working with his insurance company that ensures his vehicles. To reduce his costs during the school closure period. And, um, as a result, you know, he's gotten that percentage number significantly down. Um, so the amount that's reflected in the, in the MOA this evening is, is not the, not the right amount, I'm happy to report. So it would certainly be, um, the, the highest we would, we would pay would be at eighty percent of, of the contract price. So there's certainly fuel, fuel savings that would, would be part of this. Um, he's been able to ensure there would be a level of insurance savings. Um, and then when school would to be reopened or, or operations would to return to normal, he would, those insurance costs would go back up on his end. Um, and we would get the, the, the reassurance almost as like, almost like an insurance policy that our drivers would be readily available to return. Um, if we need services during school closure, they're there at no cost. Our, our equipment's going to be maintained and, 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 um, inspections and so forth. And any type of trainings to meet either state guidelines or, um, professional developments, um, to the bus drivers would continue and occur during this, during this time period. Um, so I think what we're really talking about now here is we would pay no more than eighty percent. I think there's a good chance in the coming days that that may go down to somewhere in the mid seventies with percentage basis. Um, he's going, we're going to know more, uh, by the end of this week. And he, I'm sure that he's working to reduce that, that percentage rate, which is all good news to, to us and, and, and every, every district that's working with NRT to try to make this work. And I think when you, when you looked at this whole picture and you looked at what we're paying and what we would, under this agreement, continue to pay at eighty percent. Um, when you look at what we, what we would not pay in terms of athletics and extracurricular. Um, you know, I think it's fair to say what we're really talking about is an agreement here to pay about when you, when you factor in that we would not be paying athletics and field trips and so forth. Um, you know, savings in the area of about, we're paying really around seventy to seventy-two percent of our expenses. Um, you know, during, during the school closure period. And, um, you know, so I, I think when I, when you factor in the other, the other, um, optional athletics and extracurriculars, um, services, which. When he did the contract, he's factored in all of that into his pricing and so forth. So to him, um, you know, the, the loss of, of the school closure, um, and the loss of that athletic and extracurricular piece. Is, is a substantial part of his, their profit margin, which I think was driving up the percentage rate when you look at just the, the regular busing piece. I know it was, it was kind of alarming to all that he might be asking for originally numbers between ninety-two and ninety-five percent. But I think we've gotten to a much better place, um, by some very, very good advocacy on the part of superintendents and business managers. And people are just trying to have a very amicable, uh, reasonable, rational conversation about, about this. Um, I think we're in a much better place this evening that we know we're not going to pay any more than eighty percent on the regular end. And when you factor in other savings, we're really looking at about a seventy percent, um, you know, portion of, of the, the, the contract in its, in its, in the aggregate of, of all, all costs. So what I'm really looking for this evening is either kind of, what's at the MO, MOA that was drafted? And, um, you know, I think, I am looking for approval to, to move forward, should I need to do so in the coming days because we're going to be together for a period of time. And, um, you know, he does need answers back in, in a reasonable timeframe to whether or not he just got to either employ our drivers or not. And, and, and he needs to react as a, as a business owner as well. Um, so that's kind of my opening comments. I hope I captured everything. Uh, Mr. Buck, I'm going to turn it over to you and that, any questions? Does that, does that cover it?
The, the thing, I, I, I'm going to just add a couple of things because I, I had some concerns when it, when I ran it last evening at ninety-five percent. And I also researched a little bit. I know that Haverill, who also has NRT rejected this exact proposal to ninety-five percent or ninety-two point five percent. But I just wanted to put a little bit more to Michael about it. Um, I did feel better after my conversation and so I just want to make sure I reiterate for everybody kind of what Michael was saying and using some numbers. Um, basically the, you know, our base contract is about seventy thousand dollars a month, but if I correctly correct if I'm wrong. But I think, so we're looking at about three months, about two hundred and ten thousand would be the base contract, what we're talking about the discount on. But, but really NRT would have made an extra thirty-five thousand or so in athletics and, you know, field trips and other sort of activities. And so when, when you think about it, like it really, they're not losing just, you know, now it's going to be twenty percent if we're paying eighty percent. They're not just losing twenty percent of that two hundred and ten thousand, they're also losing the full athletics and full field trips. And it seems like what they've done is they've allocated their expenses over all of those, so the profit margin is very spread out. So the way I'm talking, actually the eighty percent would be, there'd be about a forty-two thousand dollar savings out of the base contract. But then we'd also not be paying the thirty-five thousand dollars, um, or, or roughly out of athletics and field trips. So the total savings would be about thirty-one point four percent. Um, you know, but for purposes of refunds like that, thirty thousand we don't actually have, which is why I'm a little bit nervous if we go to the next step of refunds. But with that being said, the way I look at it is we're effectively getting about a thirty to thirty-two percent, um, reduction of what we normally would be paying. Or NRT essentially is taking in about thirty to thirty-two percent less than they normally would be taking in, which seems like a, a fairer amount than, than what I thought it was before. But I want to open it up to questions, uh, from other people. And so, I don't know, Rich, do you want to start? You look like you're off mute.
Sure, uh, uh, first of all, we need to discuss burying lead. Uh, uh, might, might have, might have buried a lead with the, uh, adjustment in the rate, but that's okay. Um, so conceptually, I'm in favor of all of this, uh, I, I, you know, for a number of reasons. But in a practical sense, Michael, what you explained, what you talked about in terms of, you know, I think we're all going to find out of why do you either stop this economy? Then it is going to be to start it back up again. And that goes to, you know, running the bus business as well, I'm sure. So, so I think the goals of all of this are right. And I think eighty percent or whatever the number turns out to be makes a lot more sense to me than ninety-five percent. Uh, did just looking at, just thinking about, you know, I mean, if you look at our, just in, in our budget, even our personnel costs, you know, being our salary cost being what? Eighty-three percent of our, uh, of, of our budget, uh, you know, probably something, uh, similar or even less than that for, for, for his business. Because he does have obviously high insurance and, and financing costs. But, um, so this, that number makes more sense to me anyway, and I'm much more inclined to go along with that number than I would have been at ninety-five. So I'm, I'm, I'm okay with that.
Diana, other questions?
I actually agree with Rich. I think, uh, hearing your breakdown, it, it makes a lot more sense to me. I mean, the numbers as we initially reviewed were a little hard to swallow, but I think that interpretation really helps understand the total impact. Um, so I, I am supportive.
Janine?
Okay, um, I might have missed any something, but I have a couple of different things, um, with the PPP that's out there. Won't their, um, employees be reimbursed first and foremost?
Um, you say reimburse, you mean would they be eligible for some type of, uh? Yeah, they would lay off, would they be?
Won't NRT, or have they, I guess, apply for the PPP? Which means that they won't lay off their employees and they will continue to pay them and that it will be forgiven at the end. But.
So NRT, they don't necessarily qualify for every, they, they don't actually qualify for all of the small business, great, that is covered on.
Immediately.
The CPA, yeah, they, they're a very large company, extremely large.
Oh, all right, okay, so then.
Yeah, I'm sorry, he did explain that in our presentation.
Um, and then, um, I think Scott might have hit on it a little bit, but how much of the contract is gas maintenance versus the driver's salary? And what happens if they don't come back? Are they going to reimburse us for lack of the employees to drive the buses?
So, um, the idea of the agreement is number one, that we would have kind of confirmation that the drivers would, would stay employed and, and come back. If, if, if they don't, then you would be a default of this agreement. And I think we can have proper questions to come back and, and, and seek some, um, you know, some, you'd be rectified for that situation. So the, the whole idea is that, you know, it's going to keep, keep the drivers employed and, and they would, they would return if that drivers, when school reopen.
Okay.
So, so, so maintenance would continue, uh, you know, the buses, ironically, the buses not running is almost, you know, they need to be maintained even more so right now, quite honestly. Um, so, so there would certainly be a, you know, some level of, of, of maintenance continuing. Um, and, yeah, certainly there's a, a level of, of fuel, insurance cost savings that, that they're going to be, be achieving, um, through, through not, not operating, they're not being schooled. And that, that's kind of the, the main savings that we're trying to capture here.
Okay, um, and then a question too, um, should school not reopen for the remainder of the year? Are they going to reimburse us or, and I should say, are we going to reimburse, um, families?
Is school not to reopen this year? Is that it?
Yeah, yeah.
Um, this is sort of the agreement, um, during the, the school closure period. Um, you know, that, that, this is what we're putting in place to ensure those drivers are, are remains, are kind of, are remain employees for the school closure period. So if it extends to the end of the year, then that extends to the end of the year. And then in September, they're, they're going to be, they'll be ready to resume.
Okay, um, and then I guess to that end, are we obligated to reimburse families? Because they didn't use a quarter worth of their payment for.
I don't, I don't know if we're obligated, but I, I mean, I think, I think this is a very unprecedented situation that no one could foresee. You know, typically when someone signs up for a bus pass, there, there's clauses that say it's a non-refundable bus pass. Um, and typically after a portion of the year, there's, you know, we necessarily wouldn't, you'd be issuing refunds. But I, it's, it's in separate specific situations. Um, this is just, to me, this is just completely unprecedented. And I think it certainly begs the question, um, you know, I think it's, surely I think it's a conversation we need to have as, you know, as we, as we know more about, um, the school closure period. And how, and how long that potentially could extend this year. Um, you know, I, I certainly have run some scenarios of what, what that would look like and what that would mean financially if, if a, a, a portion of a, a refund was given.
Okay, thank you, that was my.
Just, just, I mean, it sounds like.
I'll just, I'll just say we've talked about, oh, sorry.
From all these, all the potential reimbursement.
I'm sorry, what was it? Was the question, Rich, I think, before I catch it off?
Rich, can you repeat yourself? Rich?
Sorry, I just, my computer went, went to a different place. Um, it, it feels like we have a, in general, the conversation about reimbursement on a number of different categories is still to be had for us, right? I mean, you just don't know yet.
Correct, right.
This is just separate, this is just, this is just us and the bus company, us and the, and the bus passengers and, and, and all the other things that we, it's all to be discussed.
I, yes, I think it is a separate, um, you know, they both ultimately will have an impact budget wise, but I think, I think it is separate. I think right now we're looking to, to agree to, to, to pay a portion, um, to the company, certainly not a full portion, but a percentage basis. Um, that, that's fair and, and that we can understand based on the savings they're incurring. To also just be, as I said, you know, be insured that they're, they'll be able to, to pick up where things left off with, um, when we do resume. And we all know at some point we will be resuming, uh, school.
That's daily.
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to add that, you know, in addition to the concept of a reimbursement or a refund, we've also discussed, um, some kind of voucher or credit. Um, just something to be discussed, as we said, there's a lot still to discuss, but in some ways that concept may make more sense for us, um, for the future. Than, than issuing refunds to folks for this year. Uh, just something to keep in mind.
Okay, great, that's cool, thank you. Chris, do you have any comments, Tom?
Um, Michael will defend, uh, I, I think that in principle, this is a great idea. I think that, um, that as Michael said, that, uh, these, these bus drivers and employees, only are they essential that they, I remember back when I was in, in, in school, they feel like part of the school staff. So, uh, keeping them on hand, keeping them, um, available to have that job is important for us. Um, and at eighty percent, given, given the explanations before, I think that, uh, it's a, it's a good move for us.
And, and I, I still, I still do think it's a, a little bit high. I would hope that there's gas savings and I would hope that NRT would potentially be, you know, cutting into their profit. My, my worry is I want to make sure that NRT survives as well, because we need the company to survive a quarter to half buses next year. We need the bus drivers to. We need the bus drivers to be available. You know, we need the buses to not be, you know, taken back from any commission companies, things like that. But, um, I just want to make sure that we're, you know, that, you know, I, I would hope that NRT is not just trying to, you know, other districts are cutting into it, that, you know, that we're getting a, a good deal or something fair. Um, ultimately for refunds, the way I look at it is if it's eighty percent and we're saving essentially forty thousand dollars the rest of the year. I mean, typically about half of that comes from the school, half comes from bus department. So, I would see at most, it'd be about twenty thousand to be, you know, split up. But, again, I think that's a different discussion right now. We have to get a deal. I think that, I don't love this. I mean, I, I hated ninety-five percent. I don't love eighty percent still. I hope it can be less than that. But, I also know from my experience, usually if Michael, you know, is that daily, since before, I guess Michael's usually, you know, adamant about it. You know, Michael's usually right, um, on, on something, because he's always in the room. And so, unless I have real reason to overturn his opinion on something, I, I tend to defer to, you know, Michael, just like I would defer to Dr. Daley on those things. And so, I'm in support of it as well. I think we need a motion to approve the number out of agreement, understanding that the percentage may be changing still. Um, I don't know, somebody wants to make that motion for us?
Um, I mean, I'd like to move that, that with the understanding that it's not going to be ninety-five percent, if that's okay.
Yeah, I, I would say assuming eighty percent possibly less from the one, like one.
Yeah, eighty percent or less maybe. Okay. Uh, that being the case, I move that the committee vote to, uh, accept the memorandum of understanding between, uh, the North Reading Public Schools and NRT Inc., uh, with the revised ODA P P percentage, uh, stated that ninety-five percent will not be the case. It will be eighty percent or perhaps less. That's great.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion on this? For roll call, uh, Rich?
Aye.
Janine?
Aye.
Diana?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
I'm in favor as well. Aye. So, passes by zero unanimous. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, everyone. Thank you.
There's no stepping this time, correct, Dr. Daley?
That is correct.
And so, for bids and donations, I know Michael was going to talk about the LED project and they, I, I might try to move it along slightly, but I'm going to jump in if, if it's okay with you, Michael, quickly. But, we did have, we did have a subcommittee, a committee forum that looked at the two different LED presentations. One from ELC and one from a company called Energyware. Um, you know, really appreciate everybody on that committee that was there and gave their time. Um, from that, we had, we had two really good companies that did a great job of presenting. The one wrench that was thrown in at the end of that was, um, we, we were prepared to offer the contract to ELC. I think it was done. And then the other company did come back with a revised proposal, which, you know, was better. Um, and fortunately, ELC also came back with a revised proposal. So, I think we, you know, got to the same point we were at, which was we thought that ELC was a better presentation or, or a better proposal overall. But, that's sort of like the update on the committee, but I turn it over to Michael to talk about the next steps.
Yeah, I think Mr. Buck, I think you kind of said it, said it perfectly. That was sort of the process. Um, certainly appreciate the selection committee's role and, and hearing the presenters. Diana was a part of that. Don Keller, Liz Bork, uh, Wayne Hardaker. Uh, certainly two very qualified firms. I, I maintain that we almost couldn't go wrong. I think we would have gotten, you know, good service, um, and a good project from both, um, based on references and so forth. We certainly liked ELC's approach a little bit better and, and getting a little bit better, um, original numbers from them as well as better, uh, warranty and insurance coverage, which was attractive. Um, and, you know, Energyware got a little bit more aggressive when they found out that they were potentially going to be the awarding firm. And, uh, to be fair, we, we, we gave both firms a, a chance to kind of chop in the pencil and come back with a, a revised best offer. And, uh, ELC essentially, you know, married the revised offer for, for Energyware. So, as Mr. Buck, we already, already alluded to, I think we're looking at two very, um, you know, good proposals, that, you know, ELC is the preferred, you know, based on the committee's rankings. And I think it's the best, the best, uh, the best deal. Essentially, if you look at page two of the memo, what, what the revision essentially was is the, the, the cost was, is less than the overall cost. So, they were able to get the cost down from their suppliers, maybe take a little bit less profit margin in, in this, in this environment that we're dealing with, everyone wants work. And they were able to get a better rate with, with their, their, their lenders. Um, all that led to a monthly payment, which is reflected on the page two of the memo of about a little over ninety-one hundred dollars, getting that down to about seventy-five hundred. So, the monthly payment almost equals the very conservative energy savings. So, I don't, I don't think we can almost go wrong financially. Um, uh, it's, it's even more of an attractive proposal. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions on the proposals or on this project? And the bottom line is, is it, with the second round of proposals, it really gets us down to, you know, almost exactly balanced. And I would say ELC was fairly conservative in some other estimates. Um, so it really gets us down to almost the exact same cost, you know, savings and monthly payments. And so, over the course of five years, it almost pays for itself. Um, any comments, Diana, since you're on the committee, do you have any comments first?
No, um, I think this is, you know, I'm glad to see the additional negotiations. I think we're in a good spot and I think we're going with the right company, or recommending the right company.
Janine?
Sorry, the start six takes a long time. Anyway, um, no, it looks really good and thank you guys for, um, all the time and effort that you put into it.
Chris?
Uh, no, I mean, I think this is a, a fantastic opportunity. And, uh, I'm glad it was being conservative on our estimates and to come out in kind of, I think it's a, uh, on how good of an idea this is.
Uh, one, one, one second before I call on Rich. The other thing to point out that this does require approval of town meeting. It's, it's in the meeting, it's in the motion that we need to review, uh, review, but it does require that. And the timeline would be, I think, and I think it's up in the air depending what's going on with COVID, but theoretically, the original proposal was it could be done this summer.
Correct.
Um, Rich, any comments or questions?
No.
Okay, so perhaps we could have a, a motion or the recommended motion in the packet? If anybody has that open and would like to read it.
All right. I move to authorize the administration to award the contract for installing LED lighting fixtures at all five North Reading schools to Efficient Lighting Consultants as recommended by the Proprio Selection Committee, contingent upon the approval of a five-year lease agreement at that annual town meeting as of June to be determined for sure, two thousand and twenty.
Correct. Can I have a second?
Second?
Okay, any further discussion? The roll call, Janine?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Diana?
Aye.
I'm an I as well. So, pass this by zero unanimous. Thank you very much.
Great job, everybody. Thank you, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. I mean, Michael did all the work, really. It was great.
Everybody, Michael.
Yes.
No. Thank you.
And it, and it was good to see, it was good to see, you know, the community coming together and, you know, Don Keller in particular, I think is just a very, very motivated, smart man. So, really appreciate working with people on that committee. Um, okay, for subcommittee updates, the first one is finance planning team.
I'm sorry, the, uh, we need to do the warrant article. Yeah, we just did the last motion on the warrant article.
Oh, sorry, I was just looking at the agenda, looking through that. Okay, so can I, uh, Chris, you want to do this one?
Sure, I move that the committee vote to approve the above town meeting warrant article as recommended by the administration to grant approval of a five-year lease agreement for the installation of LED lighting fixtures at all five North Reading schools, contingent upon approval and minor modifications by town council.
Paul, second.
Thank you very much. Any further discussion? Okay, so roll call, Rich?
Aye.
Janine?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Diana?
Aye.
I'm an I as well. Pass this by zero unanimous. Thank you, Rich, for catching that. Okay, we can do that and moving on. Subcommittee, if we're okay. Finance planning team met on April ninth, two thousand and twenty. Uh, I think we've talked a lot about that overall. I think the, the key thing is we modified the revenue expectations to, to have any increase from FY twenty-one over FY twenty. Um, that eventually cut out some amount of money. We'll still have to determine what that amount is, but we think it's for the schools, probably about a hundred and fifty thousand, but with the cuts, maybe it's less. Um, and I think the biggest concern is, you know, we're hearing from state budget that there might be a three to eight percent drop. But that does not necessarily mean that it would be three to eight percent for us. It, it really depends upon how that is passed on. Just because there's a budget cut does not mean that it's across the board, from my understanding. And so, I think we just have to wait for further guidance on that. But, you know, usually this time of year, we're hoping to get better numbers, numbers, meeting after meeting. And I just think that, I mean, going into these meetings, I just hope that it's not worse. But that, that's the update from me. I don't know, Janine, do you have any other thoughts?
Um, am I still muted?
You are not muted.
Oh, thank God. Um, um, no, actually, that was a very good, um, representation of what happened.
Thank you very much. And, uh, the only other thing I would say is the, the town meeting for the Turkey Farm has been pushed back. Town election's been pushed back, so you were stuck with me on my first term for another month and a half. But, then I could potentially be voted out. But, yeah, that's, I think all the updates from there. Um, CIPC, nah, I don't know if we don't usually, I don't, maybe just don't do any big updates on this, but is there any updates that are worth sharing here? Anybody? Diana, Michael?
I, I think Dr. Daley did have an update on this.
Um, so, thank you, Michael. Yeah. I just wanted to share the suggestion that came from, uh, Michael Gilberto, town administrator today, that we consider possibly any of the items that we have recommended for CIPC, could they be moved to October as opposed to trying to fund them, um, in the summer? And so, you know, I, I spoke with Michael about this today. Um, out of all the items that we recommended, we believe that the, the pickup truck is one that we really want to make sure we have before the winter. So, October is a little bit close, but, but even with that, we feel that, um, you know, the other items, the computer devices, the lift, those other pieces, they want to try and have the, the June town meeting vote to be, um, not as, as complicated. And so, they've asked if we can move things, they request October to do so. So, I, I think that, um, and Michael, if you want to jump in, I, I feel like we could do this. And I, I very much understand and respect the position the town is in with respect to that.
Yeah, no, well said. I would agree, Dr. Daley. I think, um, I always love to move forward with some of these items. There was definitely a few of these that were, that were ranked kind of high at the last meeting. Given the situation of, you know, we're in with, with the funding and, and the budget and the uncertainty, um, you know, I, I certainly think, you know, we can make some of this work, um, if we had, you know, delayed it till October.
Okay. And I, I don't think we need a motion on that, do we?
No.
Then submitted. Thank you very much for that, everyone. Um, and then moving on, upcoming subcommittee is just finance planning team. Although it sounds like maybe there'll be a meeting of the, uh, evaluation subcommittee as well coming up. The finance planning team is April twenty-third at eight AM. There'll be a virtual meeting. For the administrative report, Dr. Daley, um, do you want to talk about the end of year report?
Yes, just, just one other item I'll say very quickly, just I mentioned earlier, but the, um, the middle school is canceling their trip to Washington DC. And I have, um, I didn't know whether anyone had any comments or questions about that, but if it's okay with you folks, they're going to send those letters home to parents, uh, tomorrow. Does that sound good to everyone? Yes, it's not bad for the kids, but, uh, it's going to happen, obviously.
Yeah, I don't think there's any other choice here. The only question would be, is there an option for, for then two classes next year?
Interesting question.
Yeah, not, I'm not sure. I think those questions I can definitely bring back to, to Dr. Apollo and Mr. Maloney, um, to consider. I'm sure they're going to do everything, um, to make this right for the kids in some way. So, so it's something certainly considered. These are unusual times for sure. So, um, I, I would definitely bring that question forward.
And I, I would love to see them get the opportunity, even if it's a year later than it typically is.
Appreciate that. I, I, I think that's a great idea. Um, for the end of year report, I, I've included it here. I think, Michael, um, it's probably best to speak about it, to share some news about our end of year report. So, I'm going to scroll down. If you want to speak to it, Michael?
Yes, thank you, um, Dr. Daley. So, this is, this typically goes around this time of year that, um, I include the end of year, the audit of the end of the year financial report. Um, it's required by, uh, law that the end of the year report gets audited prior to March thirty-first of every year. And that our report needs to get sent to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. So, the town auditor completed the, the work of the audit on the report. As a reminder, it's the financial, end of the year financial report. Essentially, um, this is for fiscal year two thousand and nineteen, has to be submitted by September thirtieth of every year. And it, it captures all of the financial activity in terms of general funds revolving, um, you know, grant activity, um, you know, for the district. Both revenues coming in and expenses going out. And they have to be recorded by, um, a certain, you know, methodology that the, the state requires. So, happy report, it, it was audited and there was, there was no findings. Everything was shown to be materially correct and accurate, as the auditor calls it, which essentially means that everything was, was correct and it was, it was verified.
Thank you very much. And I think the summary is, you've done everything well. So, I think you should be commended in your team. Any, any comments or questions from the committee? Perfect. Okay, um, and in terms of, and Dr. Daley, I know somebody reached out to me. I think with regarding the assistant superintendent, I think there's, you know, I know, I know the committee's been working hard. I don't know if you want to say anything about that, um?
No, absolutely. I mean, I, we, we've gone through the process. We had, um, interviews last week. We have three excellent internal candidates, Dr. Daniel Downs, the director of digital learning, Dr. Catherine O'Call, our principal of North Reading Middle School, Mr. Tom Colleen, our principal of the Bachelor's School. And our committee was made up of teachers, um, some administrative assistants that worked directly with this person, central office team members, we had another principal on there, as well as some of our curriculum leaders. And it was, it was really a fantastic process. We, we, we learned a lot from each of the three candidates. All of them have such great qualities and all of them have such great potential as leaders. And, you know, I, I've said this to some of you, um, in the past, but I say publicly, I mean, I, I wish I can keep all of this administrative team forever. But I can't, uh, I can't hold anyone back from moving on because they all are going to go on to great things. Um, so I, I, I think we need to value what they bring and make sure that we get, um, you know, we, we try to stay here as long as possible because they're fantastic. Um, you know, the, the next round after those interviews, I've now had a second round with, um, my other members of the central office team. This position obviously is the fourth, but Michael and Cynthia, um, and we've discussed this. And, you know, we're, we're reaching a point where we're ready to, to name a person for that role. Just given the conversation that you folks had earlier in the budget process, I want to make sure we, um, have that discussion first and also just see if there's any other developments in the next week or so, um, with sort of these drastic cuts, um, before we continue the conversation. Because again, my, one of my main goals is I do not want to be too disruptive. I don't want to name someone and then start a trickle effect with other positions. That said, I also don't want to wait too long, which is why we stayed with this process because, um, we would need to name another director or another principal to take that person's place. So, it's been a great process. We're very proud of the candidates that we have here and, um, we're excited to move forward with that, with that position soon.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Any correspondence, Dr. Daley?
There's none at this time.
Okay, so I think though. Okay, so I think the future business, April twenty-ninth, we'll have a virtual meeting at the budget workshop, um, hopefully we have some more revenue numbers by then. Uh, I think we can do it fairly quickly, we're just sort of looking at where we're at today and what further cuts might be needed. Um, A for two thousand twenty, we have another school committee meeting, we'll have the budget vote, well, that, it could be changed, but right now that's sort of scheduled, virtual DVD. Uh, Rich McGowan has a couple, has a question or a comment, Rich?
Yeah, I just wanted, you mentioned the, uh, evaluation subcommittee, uh, our plan is to have an informal conversation about logistics, uh, I don't think we're going to have a, 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 uh, official, uh, subcommittee meeting, just so the public can
Okay, thank you very much. Any other comments, questions? No, entertain a motion to adjourn?
I so move.
And a second?
A second.
Okay, roll call, Rich?
Hi.
Chris?
Hi.
Janine? Janine, yes, unmute yourself.
Uh, that's a few, but, aye.
Diana?
Aye.
I'm an aye as well, thank you all very much, I appreciate the time, and it's been a long one, but thank you guys all, pass this five zero, we are, uh, we are adjourned, thank you, guys.
Thank you, everyone, have a good night, thanks, everyone, have a great night.
Bye, y'all.